And those type of things around here. The thieves know they're leaving their ID because they're getting out with shorts and tennis shoes and going up in the hills. That's when they hit those cars and they get credit cards, ID. And then they turn that into credit card orders on the internet and deliveries of high-dollar stuff. So those type of things, property crime. And the one thing that we need to stress, and I know we do it every time, our senior leads do it, is don't leave anything in your car. If you leave it in your car, they will take it. If it's just a pair of sunglasses, all the way to GPS items.
One of the most important things we do, and if you look at our police cars, it says to protect and serve. So we've talked about protecting people. How do we serve people? How do we help them be non-victims of crime? How do we get people involved?
There's many ways that we do that. Our senior lead officers, of which Devonshire is allotted five, they geographically divide Devonshire's 44 square miles into equal parts. They go out and conduct community meetings, basic car meetings. We have several other type of meetings here. We just got done with a town hall meeting. We do a basic car plan meeting, senior lead officer meeting to plot what we're going to do for the next six months. They put out flyers, they put out recent crime information within their jurisdiction. And they also have a new e-policing where as the community members sign up online, they can get automatic newsletters about crimes that are occurring in their area, community bulletins, when to call us and those type of things.
Hidden in the beautiful community of Northridge is El Rancho on Nordoff. This facility is a cultural center of the San Fernando Valley for music and the arts.
I'd like to welcome you to El Rancho Corriere del Norte, which means, of course, Ranch of the Northwest. It's a very historic site, but it's filled with a lot of romance and heritage and history. And that's part of what we would like to accomplish here, that people just don't think California is just a concrete jungle all the time and to preserve places like this. We now have developed into several dimensions because it just started with my music performance and then inviting artists from all over the world, all cultures to come here in this new mission theater. We try to combine the music, the art, the history, the ambiance, and introduce people to it. I think most people are surprised that such an oasis could exist in the heart of a very burgeoning community. And this is eight acres in context. And the trees, for instance, they're over 100 years old. And the idea is to share that culturally with everyone and let them be aware of how we're bringing it to life for today.
One of the most important services we can provide as a government is provide services to our senior population. Our fastest-growing population in Los Angeles is our senior citizens. Here at the Robert Wilkinson Center, we provide services for transportation, for healthcare, for social services, and recreation facilities for our senior population. Let's go inside and take a look at that facility. We're here now with Linda Chan, the director of the Robert M. Wilkinson Center. To me, it's Bob Wilkinson because I knew Bob Wilkinson. But tell us about the history of the center. How did it become a center?
It started in 1976 at the Presbyterian Church in Granada Hills. And Mr. Robert M. Wilkinson was instrumental in obtaining this building for the seniors in the community. And we're grant-funded, which we're able to provide services such as nutrition, transportation, and also social services. And this allows our seniors in our community to maintain their independence so that they can stay at home, come here to the center, and enjoy a lot of the activities and, of course, the nutrition program.
Well, you know, you talk about the nutrition program. I've been here many times. You have a very large number of people that come for the lunches here. And we mentioned Robert M. Wilkinson, who the center is named after, who is still a resident in Northridge.
Yes, he is.
We call him Sweet Old Bob. That was his nickname before he was Old Bob. But he still comes to your events, right?
Yes, he does. He's very active. He comes to all our parties, which the seniors just love.
I'm going to interrupt two lovely ladies who are working on jewelry here at the Wilkinson Center. What's your name?
My name is Vilhelmina.
Vilhelmina and?
Hilda.
Hilda. Very nice. So what are you working on here?
She made a necklace and a bracelet.
Beautiful.
The bracelet is elastic, so now we have to finish it and we have to make a knot in it.
I had to make it bigger because, see, my wrist is small, but I want it.
She wants to give it away. So we made it bigger.
You should be selling that. That is beautiful.
Well, we make things and we give it away.
Okay, why don't you pick this up?
I made this one.
Can we pick this up so show the folks at home can see this? Beautiful work that this lady has done. Brent's Deli Delicatessen has been known for decades, and the Northridge community is one of the top restaurants in our community. It is also known as the top delicatessen in all of the city of Los Angeles. Let's take a look at Brent's Delicatessen.
Hi there. My name is Ron Peskin, and I welcome you to Brent's Deli. We like to think of it as one of the great neighboring restaurants in this area. I've got customers coming here every week for actually almost 40 years. Well, everything's pretty good on the menu, actually, but our sandwiches are fabulous, like the corned beef ruben, the pastrami, our stuffed cabbage. Our cabbage soup is probably second to none. Our lox is king salmon, wild king salmon. Everything's baked fresh on the premises. How's the matzoh bao soup today?
The matzoh bao soup is the best in America, by the way, sir. I've been coming here for about 25 years. My son's 23, and I brought him up in this place, almost like I own part of it to run. And my daughter's 10, and I asked her, "What do you want on a Friday night for dinner?" And she said, "Go to Brent's and get me matzoh bao soup." So it's awesome.
As we continue our tour of Northridge, we're finishing up today at Northridge Fashion Center. An icon in its day when it was built is actually one of the first regional shopping centers in America, and it's been a real centerpiece for the business community in Northridge for a long time. We're here today with Danielle Gordon, who's the director of Public Affairs here at the center. And tell me a little bit about Northridge Fashion Center as it is today.
I'd be happy to. Obviously, as you can see around you, it's very bustling, wonderfully attended. This is our farmer's market event that we have every week during the summer and the spring timeframe. So we're just wonderfully happy to be part of the community, and we're just happy to be here.
One of the things I'm very impressed with certainly is the number of jobs that are created here at Northridge Fashion Center. A lot of jobs for summer youth, particularly around Christmas time. But how many people work here at the center? And what do you bring in the way of economic value to the community?
Well, I can tell you during the non-holiday season, Northridge Fashion Center employs about 2,000 employees throughout the center. During the holiday, our employment increases about 15% with the additional associates that are employed by the department stores and the other stores within the mall. You know, we are definitely one of the biggest malls in the San Fernando Valley area, and we contribute millions of dollars, you know, per year to the city tax base. So we're happy to do that.
And certainly with 2,000 employees, you contribute a lot to the economic value of the community. Now, we're also here today at a very special event, and we're going to go do a little shopping a little bit. But the farmer's market has become kind of an institution over the last few years here that you run on Wednesdays in the summer. Tell the folks a little bit about what's going on behind us here at the farmer's market.
We hold this, as I mentioned before, April through October every year. This is our ninth year of doing the farmer's market. Hard to believe. And every year, it grows and just gets better, and that's because of the wonderful support from the community. Right now, today, we have anywhere from between 60 to 70 vendors. We do, a percentage of them need to be organic, so we're focusing on that as well. And we're just really happy to be able to provide them the opportunity, you know, the agricultural-based folks to have a place to come. And everyone loves to purchase those kinds of items as well. So we've got music, we've got things for the kids, slides, petting zoo, pony rides, all kinds of fun things. It's just a great family festival.
Another partner in the business community, Wayne Adelstein, the executive director of the North Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce. How you doing, Wayne?
Doing well, thank you. Good to be here.
So tell me a little about the Northridge Regional Chamber. When I was in business here, it was the Northridge Chamber of Commerce, and we were one of the largest, most powerful chambers in probably all Southern California. Then it almost disappeared. Now it's back, it's alive, and it is very vibrant. Tell us about it.
Well, the chamber has a long history here in the North Valley, initially established in 1917, so we're in our 90th year. So we're planning for a charity reunion down the road. As a former businessperson here in the community, hopefully you'll attend our festivities.
But I wasn't here when it started. Just make that very clear.
No, for sure. But you can be on our planning committee if you'd like, okay? The chamber, as I said, has been really long involved in the community. It's had its ups and downs, like a lot of chambers, especially in '94 when we had the earthquake. It was very difficult on the business community. We've come back. Today, we are the largest chamber of commerce here in the San Fernando Valley. We've had several names over the years. Not only do our communities change their names, but so do organizations. We've been the Zelaza Chamber, the Northridge Chamber, the Northridge Porter Ranch Chamber, the LA County Chamber, and now the North Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce. So we have our potpourri of names that we have used, and who knows about the future? But we're very excited about the role we play in the community. We're very involved in our community nonprofits. We encourage our members to participate, and they do very generously. We're very involved with pals and trying to develop the new community center, as you well know, and have always taken a strong interest in partnering with the community and representing not just the business, but the community as a whole.
Great job, and I really appreciate, Wayne, you being here today with us.
My pleasure.
And Danielle, of course, always good to see you again and be here at Northridge Fashion Center. We're going to go do a little shopping, so why don't you follow along with us?
Outstanding. Thank you. You're welcome.
Now, this is, this is, okay. Come try it. You gonna get torn?
In the city of Los Angeles.
There is an Amber Alert.
When duty calls, the LAPD responds.
We have positive on the vehicle.
No, I'm asking three days. I'm not going to say.
I don't know.
Open line on one line. Fighting argument in the background.
To protect and to serve.
Is he a policeman?
No.
How many persons are here?
My man is in the bathroom. My husband is staying.
Hold your hands up, please.
Okay, tell me what happened.
I just let him stay there.
He's been here a month. He's not paying rent. He's been here to break the door.
Can you hit?
Do you want to make a report?
No.
What do you want us to do?
That's what I want.
Your brother-in-law doesn't want you standing there anymore. You all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Standing with our community.
When we first got there, I didn't know what the heck we got.
1653, unknown trouble. Male and female are inside of a green vehicle stopped on the Sixth Street Bridge. Run code three. Engaging command.
Leave us alone!
Driver's got a gun.
16253, pressing backup. 419, we're on Sixth Street Bridge facing westbound.
All right, show me in route.
For the officers of the LAPD, it's all in a day's work. Working as a team, they take pride in what they do.
We're waiting for your last.
We're not coming out of the car!
Okay, listen, we've got time to work this out.
Shut up!
Let's just talk right now.
It has nothing to do with you, man!
I know you're upset. I want you to talk.
The little girl that's missing? What is your name, sir? Hello? Hello? Hello?
The caller is DOA.
Get away from the car or I'll shoot her! I'm gonna kill her, man!
Listen to me. Why can't you just let her go? Girl's coming out.
Hey, John, hold the gun, buddy.
Become a part of the team. The LAPD is hiring. L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 9th, 2008. We are here in the John Farrow Council chambers, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we are broadcast live on Channel 35, so we want to welcome those folks who have come down here to City Hall, and also our television viewers. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, and I'm joined today by my colleagues Tony Cardenas, Wendy Gruel, Janice Hahn, Tom Labange, Bernard Parks, Ed Reyes, Bill Rosendahl, Greg Smith, Jack Weiss, and Dennis Zine. So we do have a quorum. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Weiss seconds. Without objection, those will be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right. Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Park seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda first, and we'll come back to public comment.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearing. Item number one, there's a request from the Bureau of Street Lighting to continue that matter to March 5th.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing that till the 5th of March? Item number one. Seeing none, that will be the order of the day. Next items.
Next items are also public hearing items 2 through 11. Those are street lighting district ordinances, and I believe 12 council members will be present today. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. And like to reiterate our call for Mr. Wesson. Mr. Weezer is here, actually, so we do have 12 members. Let's go ahead and take those up.
Okay. And that is items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11.
Okay. Please open the roll on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Thank you. Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, 12 through 16, are also public hearing items. Recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to January 30th.
Okay, colleagues. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead, and we will open the public hearings on those and continue those till the 30th without objection. Or go ahead and open the roll on that. We don't need to. Okay. I saw them highlighted, so I didn't know. Go ahead to the next items, please.
Next items are building and safety lien assessments, and on 17 and 18, the department, excuse me, 17 and 19, the department is recommending those be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay. Let's go ahead, then. If anybody wishing to call those special? If not, and I'm sorry, the 20th, item 20?
That was 17 and 19 to be received and filed, and requests also on number 20 to continue that to January 30th.
Okay. Let's continue that one without objection to the 30th. And on the others, let's go ahead and open the roll on receiving and filing. And on the liens themselves, this is 17 through 19 it's left?
This is 17 and 19, and then the other ones would be to confirm the assessment. Do you wish to take those separately?
Let's take them together, then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
I can't hear. 13 ayes.
Okay. Those are assessed, received, and filed, and continued, respectively. Next items, please.
Next item is item 22, and that's continued consideration of a building and safety lien assessment, and the recommendation is to proceed with the assessment.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special? Seeing none, let's go ahead, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right. That will move forward. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 23 through 32.
And do we have cards on any of those? 26, 31, 35 have cards, so we'll call those special for cards in the public?
I'm sorry. Those have had public hearings already.
Oh, they have had. I'm sorry. So those have had public hearings, but we'll note that they had cards. If anybody wanted to call them special, a reopen. 31 for Mr. Rosendahl. Any other specials, colleagues? Any other specials? It's been called special. We got 31. All right. On the balance, let's go ahead, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Let's reconsider 32. When do you want to continue that to, Mr. Rosendahl? Do we have a date, Mr. Rosendahl? Okay. Please open the roll reconsideration of 32. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And without objection, we'll continue that one week till the 16th of January. Seeing no objection, so continued. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 33 through 37. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. We have a card on 35, so we'll call that special. Cards in the public. 33 through 37, colleagues, any specials? For the others, we'll go ahead and open and close the public hearings. Seeing no specials, let's please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is the closed session, and for council's information, that was scheduled inadvertently, and the matter is still in Budget and Finance Committee. So no action is required.
All right. So we'll just hold that. If we can recess the regular meeting, if you can call the roll for the special meeting now?
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right. First item, please.
The item on that agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held, and it's a confirmation of Ms. Louis to the Cultural Heritage Commission.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and continue that into the regular meeting, and after public comment, we'll take that up first. All right.
And do you wish to adjourn the special meeting?
Yeah, we'll adjourn that and come back to the regular meeting. And that brings a public comment now. I'd like to invite our first speaker Chuck Tenen forward to address the council this morning. Good morning, Mr. Tenen.
Good morning, council members. Chuck Tenen. Good morning, Councilman Garcetti. I and Noel Weiss came up with a unique idea that we'd like to propose to the council. It's entitled "100 Ways to Make the City of Los Angeles a Better Place to Live." It's a challenge for 2008. And how it works is each city council member comes up with just one idea or one way. The public comes up with the rest. That includes the mayor sponsoring a citywide kids' essay contest on ways to make the city of Los Angeles a better place to live, and choose the 150 best, which would be 10 from each council district, the best essays, and reward these kids, which are the future of this city and could have some great, fresh, new ideas, with a fishing trip and a camping trip adventure, with Herb Wesson as the chairman, because he's done it. It's a citywide challenge for 2008 with an interaction between the city council members, the mayor's office, the city of Los Angeles, the public, and kids of all ages to motivate some great, new, interesting ideas. If we could come up with just one a week and put it to use, it would benefit everyone in the city in making it a better place to live and making some of those ideas a reality that could help all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenen. Our next speaker is Arnold Sachs. After that, we'll go out to Van Nuys for Miriam Fogler. We'll be following up.
Good morning, council members. Welcome back from your holiday vacations. Hope everybody had a good New Year's. I'm here to address an article from the L.A. Times written by Joel Stein from Friday, January 4th, open mic at L.A. City Hall. And in his article, he goes on to talk about the public's right, or the public commentary period that we're in right now, that we get three minutes to address the public. And I must say, and I'm not looking to blow my own horn, but he mentioned my name in this article, that I got up to speak regarding the metro, the inequality metro fares. Unfortunately, he got my name wrong, and he got my subject wrong. Now, I may have spoken about metro. I may have spoken about the fact that the Expo line had a increase of $135 million over the $640 million budget that they had proposed, which is 25% above it, yet the East Side Extension being built at the same time has not incurred any cost increases. That was an inequality. I may have spoken about that and wondered why there's one rail line that hasn't laid any track, and it's already costing $135 million more than it proposed, and another rail line that's being built and hasn't received any cost increases. Well, I may have also spoken about the Second Street Bridge that has to be funded by the L.A. DOT, or the DOT, or take your pick, when it's part of the Expo East Side Extension. So the problem I hear is that Mr. Stein is concerned about the three minutes that we spend. I have something that concerns me about Mr. Stein. You need to pay attention. You need to ask some questions of the city council, and you need to get some follow-up before you write articles condemning what we do here on our three minutes of time. And it would be nice to get three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. We'll go out to Van Nuys now for Miriam Fogler. Good morning.
I was just talking to the engineer who takes care of the camera here at Channel 35. He's a wonderful guy. He's a Vietnam veteran. The problem I have is two things, and that's the unions who put a clause in there, the $25 million to save the city. I don't think this union should have done that. I think they should have had put that on the city council themselves. They're the ones that did the pay raises automatically from the, under Prop H, and that should be repealed, folks. Or I know that you've talked about changing it, but I think it should be accountable to the voters. You should not vote yourselves any raises at all, or have any right to have it increased automatically from that. And Prop R should be repealed as well, because you've got very corrupt putting this phony phone tax attached to the unions. And that's illegal, what you just did. And you should not be denying these hard-working women and men, women, men, and women who work daily and night to keep our city running, picking up your trash, fixing your sewers, just name a number of things, filling in potholes. But the real urgency is this, that we need to stop Hillary Clinton from getting in office. She's very, they're very bad, the Clintons. In my opinion, they're very bad for the United States of America. We have a problem in, I mean, in, you know, in the Middle East and Southeast Asia now, with Pakistan. We don't need to have her in there. She's very, very bad for the country, and I hope California does not vote for her. Please vote for Obama, anybody but Hillary Clinton. We don't need this person who has corruption on her hands from the Whitewater all the way in Arkansas. He was disbarred, the former president, Bill Clinton. We don't need them there. And we don't need a non-Monica Lewinsky coming into the White House. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. Dinesh Patel is our next speaker. Dinesh Patel. Mr. Patel? After that will be Ray Patel.
Good morning. Here are some problems with the LAMC 4149 and the way the law was enforced by the LAPD. The departure date on the each guest registration card must be noted on the guest registration card. It is a criminal offense to the hotel worker if he or she does not document when each guest departs. Hotels are often rented to more than one guest, and as we all know, that we all have to document each and every guest with their addresses. And if the departure date and the time of each guest in one particular room is not documented on the hotel registration card, and the LAPD performs a door-to-the-door guest interview to validate the information on the hotel registration card, the hotel work will be cited with, worker will be cited with a criminal offense. And sometimes there's tickets, if we hire, you know, when we hire a lawyer and all that, it costs us like $3,000 to $5,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray Patel is next.
Good morning. I'm Ray Patel, president of the Northeast Los Angeles Hotel Owners Association. We just wanted to come down here as a board to keep alive the fact our organization is addressing LAMC 4149 and some of the penalties that result from violating minor record-keeping errors. And today before you'll have a motion that you'll be voting on for the homeless voucher program to be able to rent a room or get a room in Los Angeles without an ID. Well, there's a lot more problems with the law that we hope this council will address, and there is a motion that's coming for you for a public hearing in front of Public Safety that'll eventually end up here. And just wanted you to take the time to understand the lodging industry is a very dynamic industry in Los Angeles. And there's different needs, and tourists, local business, and there's staff, and a lot of conglomerate things that run a hotel. And one of the things we're concerned with is the hotel worker that works in the hotel industry that gets cited by the LAPD because of LAMC 4149 for minor record-keeping errors. And I have here a document, I just got it from one of the hotel workers, that is actually, it's a court document that states they have to wait one year before they can file for their citizenship again. And the only crime this hotel worker had was the fact that they left the address off of the second guest that registered at the hotel. And those kind of nuances just don't make sense to us as an industry, and we hope this council will lend a great ear to this when we come before you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rajabai Patel is our next speaker. After that will be Osama Takeda.
Good morning. My name is Rajabai Patel. Here are some problems with LAMC 4149 and the way the law was enforced by the LAPD. The LAPD can enter a hotel without cause or warrant to search and seize the records. Second, the LAPD can enter hotel corridors to knock on room doors to doors to interrogate law-abiding guests. The LAPD can enter the back office of a hotel without cause or warrant. The LAPD can remove guest registration cards without the consent of knowledge of the guest to perform a background check. The review of the guest information on the hotel registration card is done without just cause or a warrant. The LAPD cites the hotel worker on duty for minor record-keeping errors, when he or she may not have been the employee who checked in the guest. Thus, the LAPD is citing someone who may not have committed the crime. The city attorney has not given in writing to each hotel owner some type of insurance or free from liability document in case the hotel is held liable by the guest who has his or her records revealed by the LAPD without cause or a warrant. The LAPD cites the hotel worker on duty for minor error keeping. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patel. Next is Osama Takeda. After that will be Ashok Patel.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, I want to know who's listening to me. I don't know.
We're listening, sir. Go ahead.
You're listening to me? Okay. I'd like to bring attention to the fluoride in the water that, I believe, to the best of my knowledge, that that's what's making people sick, because fluoride is not natural, you know. It's supposedly for the teeth, but it covers up the teeth. But I don't know who's listening to me, but anybody listening?
Yes, we are, sir. We're good listening, sir. Please continue.
All right. So I don't know, you know, who I could talk to about defluoridizing the water, because me, I can't really, I can't touch the water. I can't, I can't take a bath with it. So, and a lot of my friends, too, which are homeless. I don't know who's listening again, but anybody listening? Hello? Listening? Huh? You listening?
Sir, all of us are listening. Please continue.
All right. No, because I see you talking over there.
Mr. Cardenas?
Anybody listening?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Also, I think the speakers need to understand that every single elected member in the room has on the screen. We can see you by looking at you, but we can also see you on our screen, the audio and the visual. We can see your picture. Thank you.
Okay. So that's, that's an important issue. Another one is the growth hormones in the beef and the chicken. I stopped eating that. Before, it was making me sick, angry, and, you know, you know, it would, you know, just mess up my relationship. I stopped eating it. I'm healthy now, but the problem is the smoke from the ventilation from the restaurants is making me sick and making the neighbors sick. And I'd like to bring that issue up. I don't know who I could talk to about it. I don't know.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments this morning. Ashok Patel will be our next speaker. After that, we'll go to Pravul Bhakta.
Good morning, I'm Ashok. Regarding the 441, regarding the, when the clerk gets cited, they have to go and do a, see a video, which the person has to pay $400. The video just shows of the normal crime. After the crime is, after watching the video, they have to hand the video back. So you're paying for something, and you're not getting back the video. Basically, this video is basically a waste of time. They're not teaching anything. Before, they used to, so when they used to cite people, you used to go to the city attorney and discuss it with them. Now, you just have no choice. You just go and watch a video, pay them fine, and they return the video back. So I don't think this is a good situation. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Pravul Bhakta is our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Pravul Bhakta. I'm delegate of the hotel associations in the South Los Angeles. We represent about 700 motel rooms. Half of remain empty every day. The reason I came here, that it's very good that city pay attention from the homeless issue, the reason that instead of county vouchers, there are another homeless assistance agency like WLCAC, People Helping People, and some charity churches like Catholic Charity, they also send the people in the hotels with a voucher or without vouchers, and it's good if we take them in the hotel rooms and fill our vacancies, you know. So please pay attention on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Matt Dow.
Yes, thank you, Los Angeles City Council. Been here for two years this month, January 29, 2006. We had a community impact statement from the Venice Neighborhood Council, because we're big on neighborhood councils, because neighborhoods have their own intricacies, and they're all unique. So we have neighborhood councils so that we can identify these specific problems in these neighborhoods. Now, the Venice Neighborhood Council provided a community impact statement in 2004, which said that 4215 municipal code legislation would result in legal action when you remove people from Venice Beach. So I want to know why nobody takes any notice of the community impact statement, which said we'd end up exactly where we are right now, millions of dollars in trouble in a lawsuit, because the Bill of Rights never changed in the meantime, but your city attorneys seem to think it does. So whatever we do going forward from here, we really need to be careful, because it's taxpayers' money that we're throwing at these legal battles. And it's the attorneys that need to be removed who make these mistakes, because there's a couple of bums off the be- of bums off the beach just beat them. So what kind of attorneys do you have in the city of Los Angeles when you got a couple of guys who are vending off the beach can take in pro per a federal case and successfully force changes?
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Appreciate your comments today. That closes our general public comment. If we can take up the commissioner appointment first.
And that's item number 39, confirmation of Ms. Louis to the Cultural Heritage Commission.
Ms. Louis, if you'd like to join us here at the center table and like to recognize, I believe this went through the Arts Parks Committee, is that correct? Nope, Plum, excuse me. So, Mr. Reyes, would you like to, as Chair of Plum, Mr. Reyes, if you'd like to say any introductory remarks?
Thank you, Council President. It's a real honor to have Ms. Rowella Louis with us. Colleagues, you should know that this is one individual that has spent many years in the city family, has impacted our city in so many different ways, her experience, I believe, will add much-needed skills, insight to the charge that could be bestowed upon her. But I'd like to ask if you could share some thoughts as to your direction, your goals, maybe share with some of our colleagues your breadth of experience.
Thank you, Rowella Louis. I live in West Side Hills. I'm a constituent of Mr. Weiss, but I'm a native of Los Angeles, and I've had the privilege of serving under four mayors now. So my contributions to the city have been as a member of the city family. I was a Director of Public Guards Planning and Grants, and I created the city's grants program for the cultural affairs department. And then I was at the Community Development Department as the Deputy Director of Workforce Development. And I have spent many hours being on the boards of Chinatown Service Center, arts organizations. We try that grand experience of regional arts councils, which is precursor to neighborhood arts councils. So I'm very sensitive to city processes and the wonderful work that the city does. So it's my intent to be a member of the Cultural Heritage Commission and really think of the city first and all of you and your needs. Thank you.
I do have one question. Thank you, Council President. Ms. Louis, in, in light of this focus on murals and education and how we penetrate the consciousness of our youth and how they are expressing their point of view, some call it graffiti, some call it art, some call it murals, what's your position? How do you see us connecting that challenge with education opportunities and the history of many of our communities, the cultures, the diversity? Because what you see are expressions of historic significance, you see images that speak to the experience of our communities that aren't spoken or even dealt with in our academic books in school. Could you just talk about that and see how maybe you could influence our ability to have more opportunities for murals and, and dealing with the whole issue of connecting education?
All right. Well, your lucky day. I am the, I hold a life secondary California credential, which is still in effect. And so I taught high school here in Los Angeles, in South Central, Bret Hart, Audubon, Washington. And I attended John Marshall and Virgil Junior High School in Mitchell Torina. So I'm very, very aware of the education link to the arts and how we educate our children. And I was the recipient of being in an orchestra in junior high school with a hundred-piece orchestra, and I participated in visual arts. And so my simple answer is, we have to get arts education back into the city. That makes it a viable and long-term lasting impact on the students of Los Angeles to appreciate the arts, the form in which it's supposed to be done, and how they create a humanity for our citizens of Los Angeles.
Thank you. And with our budget crisis, perhaps you could have some strategies on how we bring in the private sector, some of our corporations, and you got your private business investment districts, other entities that have been emerging to basically meet and fill the gap that exists because of our dwindling resources and dwindling services. So I'm hoping we can attach that type of strategy to your knowledge base and have opportunities for more activities, maybe bring back some of the murals, refurbish them, create new ones as a way to deter and challenge the level of damage that occurs to our properties when tigers go out and just spray paint and put monikers of gangs and then other kinds of images. So with that, I'd like to ask my colleagues to support Ms. Louis and move forward and embrace this opportunity, this gift that we have in Ms. Rowella Louis. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and make this official. Thank you again for putting yourself forward and your extraordinary work and service to the city. Let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Round of applause for our commissioner. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay.
Twenty-one, I was out of the room and I aired, my first air of the year. And so if we could reconsider twenty-one, it's a public hearing on a matter at your convenience.
Okay.
You only get ten.
We're going to do thirty-one first because Ms. Rosendahl's asked, but let's go ahead and put it on the, on the agenda if we can open the roll on reconsideration of twenty-one, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, we'll call that special. We'll come back to that after item thirty-one. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl on item number thirty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. Madam Chair Hahn of the overall committee that, that has to do with LAX and my colleague Tom LeBonge, the three of us had a very significant and important discussion about safety at LAX right before the holidays happened. We were fortunate to have Michael Foot, who was the head of the air traffic controllers, do a huge presentation to us and outlined all kinds of issues. And we're going to have him speak in a few minutes, colleagues. And we're also going to start off, though, with our great partner Ted Liu, who's the Assembly Member from the area as well. But I'd like to just frame the issue, Mr. President, for just one second. Last year, LAX had 25 runway incursions, more than any other year in this decade and more than any other airport in the country. The FAA has said that to solve the problem, we need to move the runways the length of a football field closer to my constituents in Westchester and Playa del Rey. But the FAA has yet to explain how we handled the same amount of traffic at LAX in previous years safely and with half the number of one runway incidents. Two months ago, the National Air Traffic Controllers Association came to my office with an answer to that question. From 2006 to 2007, the FAA decreased staffing. Folks, they decreased staffing at the LAX control tower from 43 certified air traffic controllers to just 33. In the same year, runway incursions and incidents almost tripled from 10 incidences in 2006 to 25 incidents in 2007. In short, the FAA has drastically understaffed the control tower and put passenger lives at risk at LAX. I want to repeat that sentence. In short, the FAA has drastically understaffed the control tower and put passengers' lives at risk at LAX. I submitted this motion so that you could hear what the air traffic controllers, our frontline on passenger safety at LAX, have to say about the threat to safety at our airport, and so that you would join me in formally requesting that the FAA take immediate emergency action to fully staff the LAX control tower. And with that, Mr. President, I'd like to ask if it's possible for Mr. Ted Liu, Assemblyman Ted Liu, to be able to make his remarks.
Absolutely. It would be our honor. Assemblymember, welcome to our chambers and great to see an old friend here.
Good morning, President Garcetti, and members of the city council. I represent the 53rd Assembly District, which includes LAX. And it's my honor to be here. I came down from Sacramento because of how very important this issue is. You're dealing with an issue of life and death. LAX is a ticking time bomb. It's not a matter of if a collision's going to happen, it's a matter of when. The Government Accountability Office issued a report last month in which it stated there is a high risk of a catastrophic runway collision. It identified an incident in August in which two jets miscolliding with each other by 37 feet, that's less than the distance between where you sit and a few rows back from where I am. Since that report came out last month, another runway incursion happened. The level of safety at LAX is in crisis mode, and we need to do something about it. That's why I commend Councilmember Bill Rosendahl for his leadership on this. I commend Councilwoman Janice Hahn for passing out her committee, for all of you, for taking this up. I strongly urge that you pass this motion. I also make an additional request of you, and that is that you petition the Secretary of Transportation and the FAA to reduce flight volume and increase spacing between flights. When LAX was built, no one said it was unsafe. It is only unsafe today because we've jammed way too many flights into and out of this airport. The President of National Air Traffic Controllers Association recently made a statement and wrote a letter to Secretary Peters, and he said, "We simply cannot safely handle the volume of air traffic that the FAA is currently demanding of us." And in this crisis, we also have an opportunity, the opportunity to finally regionalize air transportation in Los Angeles. It's something that Councilwoman Jane Harmon, Supervisor Don Knabey, Bill Rosendahl, the mayor, many of us here have been fighting for. We can divert traffic to other regional airports, finally come up with a regional solution. And let me conclude by thanking all of you for the hard work that you do and for the air traffic controllers for their heroic efforts and their understaffing that they have to go through in keeping us safe day in and day out. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Assemblymember. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much for that. And I just had to remember, the LA Times in its editorial, you know, this New Year's business, talks about one of their goals is separation of runways. The LA Times needs to hear this, that the FAA and the staffing issue is a significant issue, more significant than what they're ballying about in their editorial. I'd like now to have Mike Foot come up, who is President of the Air Traffic Controllers Union at LAX Towers. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Again, my name is Mike Foot. I am the President of the Air Traffic Controllers Union at Los Angeles Tower, and I've got a few brief remarks referencing the safety at the airport. You should have in front of you a copy of the study that we put out late last summer that documents that by staffing the tower, historically, you will save nine runway incursions a year at the airport. Between the years 2006 and 2007, as the councilman mentioned earlier, we lost 10 certified controllers at Los Angeles Airport, and our runway incident numbers more than doubled. And it was just further proof of what the FAA already knew, that staffing and safety are directly related. And there's some, there's some things in that staffing study that I point directly to that I'll get to in a moment. I'd like to mention that the staffing crisis was completely predictable. The FAA had a large percentage of its workforce that was ready to retire, and they took it upon themselves to impose work rules on us that nobody wanted to work under. So what happens? Controllers retire. They retired en masse, and if they don't retire, they're going to lose money for the rest of their lives in their retirements. So there's a big financial incentive for us to do so. The same imposed work rules are also hurting our recruitment of seasoned air traffic controllers. We used to get controllers from facilities like Burbank and Orange County, John Wayne, Long Beach, Van Nuys, places like that. They had five, 10 years of experience before they showed up at our facility. Now we're getting controllers directly off the street, many of whom have never worked an airplane before in their life. So to underscore some of this stuff, we went 27 months, about two and a half years ago the time ended, we went 27 months, over two years, without one single controller error. And our runway incursion numbers during that timeframe, when we were fully staffed, were drastically lower.
Would you repeat that again, what you just said? I know my colleagues have other things they're listening to. What was that last sentence you just said?
Well, during the timeframe, when the air traffic control tower was fully staffed, we were, we had drastically fewer runway incursions, and we went 27 months without one single controller error, which is unheard of for us. In this last year, we believe we had seven. I have to double-check the statistics. I was putting all that, all that together, but we had seven controller errors in one year at L.A. Tower. That's unheard of. It's never happened, never even close. The most I can remember was ever having three in a year. We went 27 months when we were staffed by not having any. Now we have seven. So that's another incident, or another safety issue that's out there on the horizon. I think I'll talk next about the, the centerline taxway as a comparison. That's what caused us to come up with this staffing study in the first place, because we kept hearing people say, "If you build a center taxway, you solve your, your runway incursion problems at Los Angeles Airport." Unfortunately, the facts don't bear that out. The only way you're going to be able to determine it is to go through the write-ups of all these runway incursions. They're in the back of that staffing study. And...
Keep going.
Keep going, all right. And the back of that staffing study, I highlighted every single one of the incidents that would have been or could have been possibly prevented by putting in the center taxway. It came out to one per year. So nine by staffing the tower, one per year for moving the runways, just to give you some examples of how that goes. And I wanted to point out one example, because I think it shows why it's not just how many errors controllers make, but how many we prevent when you have alert, non-fatigued air traffic controllers working in the cab. And then March 22, 2001, is the first one of these that I've highlighted. Talks about an aircraft rolling out a runway 24 right, and the exits had Alpha Alpha down at the end of the runway. A 737 is rolling on 24 left. Now, this aircraft kind of rolled out onto 24 left. He made a mistake. He got out on the runway. The controller saw it happening, tried to stop the pilot for getting on the runway. He was too late, went back to the pilot that was rolling on 24 left, canceled his takeoff clearance. In this case, we, we barely had a runway incursion, just barely. But you can see by the actions of, of air traffic controllers what we do to prevent runway incursions every single day. And the more, the more work we have to perform, with the less rest we get, the harder it is to catch things like this. Now, as I, as I mentioned earlier, there's one per year, and I went through here and I highlighted every single one of them that could have been prevented. And the only way you're going to do it, there's no shortcuts, is to read through these things. Do you find an error that I made? Let me know. I don't think so. Okay? I also heard that there was a letter being circulated by the FAA, passing out some rather disingenuous information, so I thought I should address that as well. What the FAA has done is they play a little three-card monte game with, with facts and statistics. In, in the history, going back throughout our history of the FAA, when somebody got out on a runway that wasn't supposed to be there, that was a runway incursion. But the FAA was having too many runway incursions, so they created a surface incident. And they used that statistic to split these up and made it look like they were doing better. However, about two months ago, in the tower cab, I signed a document, a briefing sheet, advising me that surface incidents are now runway incursions again. And then when you look at the FAA letter, you kind of get the impression that the, the person that wrote that letter didn't get the memo. They are, they're all runway incursions again, and they're leaving them out of their statistics, trying to make people not see what's going on, a little smokescreen, if you will. I'd also like to point out, and these things have been mentioned earlier, that if you look in this, in this document, I think it's tab number four, there's a letter from 2002. And if you, if you don't think the FAA believes that there's a connection between runway safety and staffing, read the letter. It's highlighted. You know, historically, LAX has been critically short-staffed, unable to open, you know, and you can just, I don't know if I'm going to read the whole thing, but it's in there on tab four and all highlighted for you. The NTSB reports about fatigue, controller fatigue have been mentioned here earlier. And also the GAA reports directly linking controller fatigue and runway safety. And I pointed out to you earlier, and I know I'm running through this quite quickly because I know you're pressed for time, how a controller saves runway incursions. And when you have tired controllers, they're going to catch less of them. So anyway, that's basically my remarks. I guess, do you have questions?
Thank you. Yeah, hang loose and we'll get with that. And I would just like to ask Jim Ritchie from LAWA, the deputy head there, to come up and just react, because I know Gina Marie spoke at the committee meeting, and it was very clear where she came out on this. And I'd just like to hear my colleagues hear this for the record, how our LAWA staff feels about the understaffing of the tower.
Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl, Jim Ritchie at Los Angeles World Airports. We certainly, as, as we stress safety on a daily basis, we can't be too safe. We certainly on this issue would support the full staffing of the FAA control tower.
Thank you very much. And I want to turn it over to, to my great colleague, the Chair of the Committee, who quickly put this on the agenda before the holidays because of the significance of it. What we've just heard, colleagues, is understaffed and overworked, okay? These are big issues about safety. And God forbid, there's a crash at LAX based on the fact that the tower is understaffed. I believe it's understaffed. I believe our president is derelict and is doing... I believe our President is derelict in his duty in not giving the FAA more support to have more air traffic controllers. I'm sorry. Madam Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. And just for the record, he meant, I believe, President Bush, not President Garcetti, right?
Yes, right.
Okay. Ms. Hahn.
Well, thank you. And I really do appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Rosendahl, bringing this to the forefront, and which is why, even as Chair of this committee, I let you kind of take the lead on this issue. This airport is in your district, and it's certainly an issue that you care very much about. And however, certainly, it is one of the issues that all of us should care about in Los Angeles. This is our largest airport. This is one of the nation's busiest airports, and first and foremost, we want it to be safe. And we've looked at safety in a number of areas for LAX. Certainly after 9/11, we had a different focus in terms of what safety meant for our traveling passengers. But clearly, we've known for a long time that we've had too many close calls, we've had too many near misses. The Government Accountability Office issued a report called Aviation Runway and Ramp Safety recently, which said, among other things, that LAX had more runway incursions than any other airport in the country from 2001 to 2006, and that the short staffing of air traffic controllers at LAX may have contributed to these incursions. And let's be clear to everyone who's paying attention to this discussion, both here in our chambers and any of you watching on Channel 35, that the traffic, air traffic controllers are federal employees. They are not LAX employees, they're not city employees. They're like our custom agents or our TSA baggage screening staff. Those are federal employees. And we rely on the federal government to assign our controllers to LAX. And what we learned in our committee before the holidays was that our staffing levels are too low. And we've just received a response from the FAA on some of these issues that we're discussing. And by their own admission, they say that we only have 34 certified air traffic controllers. We should have about 47 certified air traffic controllers. And what does that mean? That means we're also filling in the staffing levels with interns, folks that are getting their training. Well, I say, that's a little risky. I think we should have 47 certified air traffic controllers at all times in that tower. We've heard that it's fatigue, it's working double shifts. It's, you know, like any human being, you're going to make mistakes, and we can't have that. We know that we're going to eventually talk about the North Airfield and what we need to do about that to reduce the possibility of incursions. But I will say, and I certainly respect our Assemblymember Ted Lieu, and I appreciate you coming here, but I would respectfully disagree, colleagues, that at this time, we look to reduce flights at LAX. LAX is still the hub for international tourism, and it's the destination of choice on the West Coast for our airlines. And we don't want to risk these airlines going elsewhere. We want tourists. We want visitors. Since 9/11, we have not made up the number of flights or people flying in and out of LAX. We've agreed to cap it at 78 million annual passengers. We're right now about 62 million. We're not anywhere close to what we've agreed to cap in terms of people coming in and out of LAX. And I think right now, capping flights is not the right thing to do. I think we need to pay attention to our economy here in Los Angeles, while not certainly foregoing safety. We can have it both. We can continue the number of flights at LAX. But one of the things that we can do today is make a huge call to the federal government, asking FAA to up the staffing with certified air traffic controllers in that tower. That's something we can do now. That's something the FAA and the federal government has power over doing. So what we're going to do today, I think, is, as a city, as a city, we're going to express our grave concern for the inadequate staffing of air traffic controllers at LAX. And we're asking the FAA to take immediate action to bring us back to the 47 certified controllers that are authorized for one of the busiest airports in the nation. And we're also going to ask our LAX staff to look at this GAO report and come back to us with recommendations on what else we can do to immediately address their findings, particularly as it relates to airport safety. So thank you, colleagues. Thank you for this discussion. I think it's something we all ought to pay attention to before something tragic happens out at LAX.
All right. Mr. Gardines is next, then, Mr. LeBonds, and then Mr. Alacon.
Thank you, Janice Hahn. As the Chairwoman of the Committee that these matters go to, I think it's important for people to understand that these are the kinds of issues that unfortunately, America, or Los Angeles, or communities, don't pay attention to until a tragedy occurs. And then people are shocked as to why we don't have enough air traffic controllers, are shocked to hear that we've had so many incursions. Incursions is a fancy word of saying there was unsafe distances between the aircraft. Some of them got too close. Somebody made a human error. Thank God, nobody died on the incursion, but it's just maybe a few seconds away from death for not just one person, perhaps dozens or hundreds of people, all in one incident. And I think it's important for us to ask of the press right now to cover this issue and to mention that the City of Los Angeles is concerned, to mention the fact that we have this shortage of air traffic controllers, to actually mention the fact that we are asking of Congress, we are asking of Washington, we are asking of the federal authorities to fund the proper number of these individuals so that they can continue to save lives. And also follow up and then remind the people of Los Angeles that perhaps 30 days from now, we don't have any responses officially, or that 60 days from now, or 90 days from now, that they have not paid heed to the fact that studies have shown over and over at LAX, our airport in Los Angeles, that it is in a dangerous situation. Studies have said it. We're making a statement to Washington. What we have here is a request of Washington. The City of Los Angeles, the Council, the Mayor, all of us together, we can scream as loud as we want, we can write very carefully and accurately, truthfully crafted resolutions like this, but all it really is, is an ask of the federal government, because we don't have the authority of that higher government. But what we're asking them to do is just to pay attention. Whatever it is they're doing in Washington, really is not something that we should concern ourselves with, but this is our communication with them about the danger that lies here in Los Angeles. And specifically, when it comes to, the facts are what they are of these studies. When we are understaffed with air traffic controllers, we have higher likelihood of something bad happening, just based on the number of incursions. But when we are fully staffed, that incident rate goes down dramatically. So please, I'm pleading to the press, simply mention the fact that the City of Los Angeles is requesting this of Washington. And then also follow up and help us remind the people of Los Angeles whether or not they're even listening. Please do that. Because heaven forbid that there be a tragedy in the next 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. I hope that it never, ever happens. But if it does, at least it's on the record that it was Washington that did not listen to us.
Mr. LeBonds.
There are a combination. Thank you, Mr. President. Is there a representative of the Los Angeles airports here, if you want to just do that there? And I just want to ask for the CLA, is there a way we communicate to our delegation that we could send a directive that the City Council asks that the Southern California delegation, Mr. Miller, has this strong feeling that we want to make sure we're getting our fair share, is the question. Hey, Mr. Ritchie, how are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, sir.
Okay. Now, a question I want to ask, and listening to the debate and the comments, so it's all very worthy, is, instead of going on record today to say, you know, we feel this way, what if we invited your colleagues out there for the federal government to this City Hall? We did invite them to the City Hall, formally?
Yeah.
Did we invite them? This is the question I want to know. In writing or in...
In writing.
Not in writing. I always do it in writing, and then they have to write back and say, "No," that's the only typical thing. That's my thought there, just to do that, just so that they hear that. And the other question that I wanted to have, Mr. Ritchie, because you may be familiar in the airport circles, if you're a controller in Phoenix, controller in Las Vegas, controller in Salt Lake City, maybe the housing cost is a little different than the housing cost in Southern California. A federal employee may have an option that a city employee wouldn't have, because we're a city, you know, they may recruit a federal employee from another part of the country to come work here. Is that true, or do you know? Is it all local Southern California employees?
Yeah. Councilman LeBonds, cheers.
Hold my time.
Los Angeles World Airports. Frankly, I'm not an expert on the FAA or the federal government procurement of employees.
Right.
But they, I would certainly assume that they move around the country with different assignments.
Right. You say, could the representative of the local union, yes or no?
We can get controllers from Phoenix and other places.
You can get them?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'd also like to add, too, that our Housing Department for the city, looking the way we could help, too, because I think that's one of the discouragements sometimes of coming to Southern California, is the housing, but all that, I think we should look at in broad. Let me ask you, how did you do it Friday and Saturday night? How did you land planes in that rain? I just am amazed, you know? Even when it's clear, it's amazing how this technology comes out of the sky and et cetera. Flights. How many flights? We had this, and hold my time after I answer the question. I think it's Atlanta number one, Chicago number two, number three is Dallas-Fort Worth number four, is Los Angeles. Give me five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Well, that's, we certainly rank in the top five on any given day. I don't know the exact percentages for that.
Right.
But certainly, Mr. Foot could give you a better idea on the skills required. We certainly have a air traffic control personnel that are very skilled in the combination of navigational aids. It's certainly a demanding time in an all-weather operation.
Well, I think there's a reason why there's FAA and a national control. Cutting flights, though, that doesn't necessarily... What's your opinion on that?
Well, flights represent, as Councilman Hahn indicated, was, it's vital to the commerce in the local.
Does anybody hold my time when I say, "Hold my time," or do I got to say, "Hold my time?"
We held it, don't worry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to criticize the President there at all.
Was that Bush or Garcetti?
And of course, as landlords, the commerce to the region and the demand for air travel, we strongly support. The airlines serve our constituents, they serve the community. Councilman Hahn is correct. We have not recovered from a level prior to 9/11 where the airport was serving about 67 million annual passengers. We're down to 61, 62 at the time.
Good, and I know.
We run 1,800 to 2,000 operations a day.
1,800 flights a day.
And frankly, we don't shape the demands of air travel. Our airline colleagues react, respond, and meet that demand.
And if there's four runways at LAX, are the 1,800 flights divided somewhat equally to either runway?
Generally, air traffic control splits those on the demand of the arrival traffic.
Right. And since we missed it, could you put another seven seconds on the clock like they do in the pro games when you...
Go ahead, I think you just used them, though.
On the question here, when are we coming to the issue of the runway movements? Where is that timewise from now? Hold my time.
Monday, we will take to our Board of Airport Commissioners, and I would say that our Board of Airport Commissioners are equally as concerned with safety as this body is, certainly. Monday, we will take to them to request to start the environmental process to do the in-depth analysis for our North runway system, among other things. That's a process that takes approximately two years, to be followed by the federal process, I would suspect would take about 18 months. So in that gap, in that period of time, for the proper resolution of the North Airfield, we do need to develop interim measures and reexamine some of those issues that have been raised either by Councilman Rosendahl or the GAO report, or other issues.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. As I close here, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you. It may be three years before we discuss the runway, pro and con, whatever there is. Ms. Hahn, thank you for your leadership, your strong leadership from the beginning of moving the projects forward at LAX, which is important. But I think what we've got to do here is get more people. What we've got to do is get here more people to have more eyes on the situation, to be great leaders. So Jerry, let's let the delegation know how they can feel, and maybe Mr. Rosendahl and Ms. Hahn can coordinate that with Mr. President, Mr. Garcetti's effort there, and that we call out on that, because it is somewhat of a different, as Mr. Gardines pointed out, relationship in government between the federal government. We should speak, and we all want it to be safe every day, everywhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon is our next speaker.
Every day, everywhere. Members, I absolutely agree that we need to demand from the federal government that they increase the numbers of air traffic controllers at LAX, but I wouldn't have otherwise spoke, except that I believe that we need to focus on the issue of congestion at LAX, which is the real problem. And I agree with Ms. Hahn that if we didn't have the congestion issues, we may not have the same result of the study that was conducted in terms of focusing on the issue of fewer traffic controllers. I think we would need those controllers, no matter what kind of airport scenario we were able to create. Nevertheless, the city cannot simply brush off our own responsibility for the congestion issues by saying that the air traffic controller problem is a federal issue. This is a city issue. And so, yes, we should resolve to work with the federal government to get more air traffic controllers. At the same time, we have to be much more aggressive and much more creative in reducing the congestion and opening up more avenues to expand the use of Palmdale Airport and creating mass transit that enables us to do that. The MTA has been woefully lacking in any kind of guidance whatsoever to alleviate the air problems that we have, whether it's goods movement. I appreciate the work they did in identifying the Alameda Corridor, but they have completely forgotten about the responsibility. And that's another thing we got to fix in this. But they have, the MTA has completely forgotten about the needs to address the outer perimeter warehousing issues to effectuate the goals of the Alameda Corridor. And so, so these are our responsibilities. And while I absolutely support Mr. Rosendahl's efforts to identify the air traffic controller problem, and Assemblymember Lou, of course, thank you and know how passionate you are on this issue, I also know that you are both champions of the congestion, belief that we have to reduce the congestion at LAX and support the concepts that I'm presenting. I just wanted to get our focus back on our responsibility as a city to do a better job, because when the planes do crash, the city cannot claim that it was the federal government's fault. It is a congestion problem, and this is one of the elements to fix it. But we have a much greater responsibility to fix the congestion problems.
Thank you. And with that, that's our last speaker, so let's go ahead on this item. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President's item number 21, and that was called Special Four Card from the public.
Okay. Mr. LeBonds, would you like to take the card first?
No, just thank you, members. This is a matter where someone wanted to speak on a housing appeals. I feel the department did act accordingly, but I think we should have public comment here.
Okay. We have one card. Donna Li Signoli. Donna Li Signoli here. If you'd like to come forward to the podium, ma'am. And...
Are they still here? I don't see them.
Two minutes to address the council, and if you... Just move the microphone down a little bit, we can hear you best. Thanks. Perfect.
Excuse me, Mr. President. This should be treated as a fair hearing matter, requiring that council members heighten attention.
Okay. This is a fair hearing matter to remind council members, so, Mr. Hahn and Mr. Rosendahl, it's a fair hearing matter if we can just have everybody... Hold on one second, ma'am. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosendahl, it's a fair hearing matter, so I need everybody to be in their seats for this. Mr. Weiss, thank you very much as well. Okay, go ahead, ma'am, they're listening, and they're coming as they sit down their seats. Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'm here to oppose a, a bill that was sent from the city, uh, for doing some yard work. I had received a, uh, letter from Tim Day, um, that there had been a complaint in the backyard about, um, uh, I had, I had called him because the letter I got from him was very vague, and I called him to find out exactly, uh, what he wanted me to do and, uh, what the work order would include. And with my conversation with him, he said that there was, uh, some graffiti on a trailer window, uh, that, um, the backyard, that was like in the, the front of the house, and in the backyard, uh, there was tall grass, excessive leaves, and a broken tree branch. Um, as it ended up, there was excessive leaves, but there wasn't any, uh, tall grass, that belonged to the neighbor. And I have a picture, uh, to show, uh, where the tall grass come from. Um, so I did, uh, I complied with the work order, and I stayed, um, I, I live in San Diego, I drive over 100 miles to come and do this work. Um, I stayed and I did some other work, I put some, uh, a border in the front, on the front of the property, and I have, uh, and I, uh, did the work that, uh, I was told to do, but, uh, the city sent people out to do other work that wasn't included in the work order, and I wasn't notified, uh, that, uh, there were going to be, uh, they basically trimmed branches, and, uh, I wasn't notified of that. And I had the tall, I had the leaves in the yard in the first place because of the extreme weather that we were having, that knocked down trees, uh, all down the line on the east side of the property across the street.
Thank you, ma'am.
And when I tried to pick the leaves up, it blew them away.
I can ask you to conclude, please?
What?
If I can ask you to conclude, um, that's why we have the clock there, so you can just give us your last.
It's what they did, they basically trimmed trees and, uh, they just savaged, uh, a tree, a bush that was in front, that had been there for 40 years, and in the back, uh, they did the same thing to another tree.
Okay. Thank you.
And, um, I'm, um.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Mr. President, thank you, ma'am. Building Safety is here if they had any questions.
Okay.
Ms. Kim?
Building Safety is here.
Sorry, were you calling Building Safety for it, or just letting her know? Mr. LeBons? Were you asking them to come up, or you're just letting her know?
No, no, I, I was just letting her know, and I think we've had the hearing, and unfortunately, it's a situation where I believe the city was diligent. If you'd like to hear from the city staff, I'd be happy to.
None unless you do.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, the time has expired on the, on the clock, so.
Ma'am, real quick.
One last thing, just, real quick, 10 seconds.
I had things taken from my yard, I don't have a storage shed, and I had some garbage cans.
I'm gonna work with on the side, yeah, if I could.
Which I have pictures of.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. LeBons will take a look at those and see if he can work with you on that. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments today. If we can open the roll on 21 again, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Next item's item 35, and that was called Special Four Cards From the Public.
Okay. Uh, we have one card without any name on it. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on item 35? We have no, no name, Mr. Sax or Mr. Tennen, 35? Going once, go on twice, okay, we'll close the public hearing on 35. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Uh, next one, Mr. President, there is a special one introduced by Councilmember Weston, seconded by Councilmember Parks, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Los Angeles Police Department has requested the city council to offer a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the suspect who robbed a check cashing facility at 3411 South La Brea Avenue on January 2nd. Immediate action is required to protect the safety of the community. Council must first find, I'm sorry, council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
As approved, and if anybody wishes to speak on the item, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved as well, we'll send that forth with without objection. Uh, next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There is an excuse on this, Councilmember Grohl requested to be excused Friday, February 8th to leave at 11:00 a.m., that meets council policy.
She's excused.
And that clears the desk.
Any business announcements, colleagues? Any announcements of business nature? Not? And are there adjourned motions? Oh, sorry.
Uh, today is the 9th of January, and there was an earthquake here back in 1994 at 4:31 in the morning, and, uh, you never could have enough for preparedness, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, I know it's free speech, but shift happens, and there's going to be a shift of 150 years, uh, of the San Andreas Fault, so we should be prepared. Now, if you asked the question, Mr. President, I gave you the answer.
Thank you very much.
Preparedness.
And we got you those, um, those airports, if you want. Number five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, Mr. LeBons. Las Vegas? Mr. LeBons? I will tell you later. Mr. LeBons, just of a business nature, the busiest airports, five is Vegas, six is JFK, seven is Houston, eight is Phoenix, and nine is Newark, 10 is Detroit. So, we want to make sure you got, get your answers. With that, uh, let's go ahead, are there adjourned motions, colleagues? Anybody have adjourned motions? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alacon, Cardenas, Grohl, Hahn, Weiss, LeBons, Parks, Reyes, Roosevelt, Smith, Weiss, Weston, and Garcetti.
All right, we will next be in session, colleagues, on Friday, uh, that is the 11th of January. We look forward to seeing everybody then. Thank you all for coming and for watching, and this meeting of the city council is adjourned.
Hi, and welcome to At Your Library, LA's inside source for what's hot, what's cool, and what's just right at your library, the Los Angeles Public Library. I'm your host Franklin Delany O'Neely, and on this episode, we're gonna look at the library through teenage eyes. Maybe you're a teenager yourself, or just maybe, you or someone in your family will someday find themselves living under the same roof as a teenager. And if that's the case, I guarantee there will be times when you'll want them out of the house for a few hours. Luckily, if you live in Los Angeles, there's a fantastic place for them to go, where they'll have a great time, make tons of friends, and even come home smarter than they were when they left. Stick around, and you'll find out why LA teens love the Los Angeles Public Library. Let's start by checking in with City Librarian Fontaine Holmes, in the rare books room of the Central Library. Hi Fontaine!
Hi Franklin!
You know Fontaine, I was at the library the other day, and I saw this strangest thing. A bunch of teenagers right there at the library!
Well, the Los Angeles Public Library is a happening place for teenagers. We have special teen areas in every one of our 71 branch libraries.
Well, it wasn't always like that. When I was a kid, the library wasn't exactly at the top of the list of places teens wanted to go.
Well, we've changed that here at Los Angeles Public Library. We have fabulous, special programs for teenagers to draw them in. We have all of the resources that they need to do their homework and to succeed in school. And it's a great place to meet their friends.
So what does the library now have that's got so many teenagers wanting to be here?
Well, we have special programs that we have developed for teenagers.
And how do you go about getting them interested in learning once they're here?
Well, this is a really important role for the, the public library. And actually, last year, we launched Student Smart, a really exceptional new program. We have partnered with Princeton Review, and with the Library Foundation of Los Angeles, to offer skill-building classes, and PSAT, and SAT preparation courses, and counseling for young people all over the city to help them get into college.
So you're kinda like the teenager's cool, smart friend, the one who helps them nail their interest exams?
We think so. We think that we're friends of theirs, and that we welcome them, and that's why they come to the library.
Now, you said these special teen areas are at all 71 of the branches, and I know you have one at the main library downtown. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yes, well, actually, it started at the Central Library here. We designed, with the teenagers and an architect, a very special department in the Los Angeles Public Library, Central Library, called Teenscape. Actually, it has become a model for teen spaces in other public libraries across the country and around the world. And we have lots of fun things for teenagers. We have DVDs, we have large television screens, we have homework spaces, we have computers. And you know, teens were the originators of multitasking, so they do a lot of things at the same time.
Now, I say we definitely have a multifaceted bunch of teenagers here in LA. What kind of events have you put together to attract their interest?
We've had all kinds of events for teenagers. We've had filmmaking, and screenwriting, and yo-yo contests, and cookery classes, astrology, just the whole gamut of, of subjects in the library that would appeal to teens.
Wow, it sounds like the library might actually be way more fun for teens than just going to the mall.
I hope so, I think so, yes. And we probably get more teenagers here than they do at the local mall.
Fontaine, this all sounds like so much fun, you're making me wish I was still a teenager!
Well, I think we're all still teenagers at heart sometimes, and you don't have to be a teenager. We have all kinds of programs, and special events, and exhibits and activities here at the Los Angeles Public Library for adults, too.
Well, I'm definitely gonna be checking some of those out. Thanks Fontaine!
Thank you Franklin.
Now, here on At Your Library, we like to go right to the source to get you the most up-to-date information. I used to be a teenager myself, believe it or not, but my membership in the International Association of Teenagers expired a while back. So I've asked our On The Spot reporter Andrew Tarr to sit down with a couple of actual teens to hear what they have to say. Let's join him inside that very special teenage section of the Central Library, Teenscape. You just heard Fontaine talk about it, now, what do you say we take a look for ourselves?
I'm here in what I've been told is the very coolest part of the Central Library, Teenscape. We took a little vote here, and it was unanimous, this is the coolest part of the library. I'm here with Anna, April, and Jose, and we are going to talk about some of the things that make Teenscape cool, and some of the things that make the library cool, whether you're a teenager, or maybe even if you're not a teenager. How you guys doing today?
Good!
And you go to the library a lot, I guess, huh?
Yes!
Every day!
And is that because of Teenscape?
Yes!
Mostly, yeah.
Kinda keeps you guys out of trouble, huh?
Yeah!
Yeah!
Instead of being outside on the streets. You, you come here, you, it's a good place to relax.
You have really cool people.
So you actually, you have a lot of fun here at the library?
Oh yeah! You have more fun here than anywhere else, because you get to socialize with people you've never met, and they'll tell you about things that they're doing, and you wanna get into it with them.
What do you guys like most about Teenscape, as opposed to maybe the other parts of the library?
I guess all the computers, and, um, all the books.
This part of the library, it's a lot more social than the ones down, down below.
So this kinda feels like your place?
Exactly!
It's kinda like your home away from home, huh?
Yeah!
This whole room was designed by teenagers?
Especially in the back, it used to be close together, but now it's, now you can walk through. There's the books over there, and there's for separate place if you wanna hang out over there, do your homework.
What parts of Teenscape do you think seem like they were most designed by teenagers?
They're like a design.
Yeah!
How comfortable it is, you can fall asleep here, and nobody will bother you.
I guess it's more comfy, they're more like home.
Yeah, but you can't sleep here, you know, they close at eight. So, like, this is your second home from ten?
But if this was 24 hours...
Then you wouldn't live here.
Yeah, that's probably why it's not 24 hours, Jose, your, your parents probably wouldn't be too, too happy. Remember we used to have a kid, Jose, he used to live here? Oh, he's at the library now!
If they were open here 24 hours, I'll be here all day, all night. You have food down there, they have a food court down there, they can actually go and buy. So like, this library is at home.
And you guys watch movies!
We have movies.
We have plasma TV over here.
Plasma TV, sweet.
The chairs are like designed for us to be together, or to talk to each other, and hang out with each other.
So while you're on...
The internet, yeah. It's a little circle, and it's for computers, and you can talk to each other.
It's a lot more easier, more convenient.
Does that make doing homework actually more fun?
Yes!
So you actually don't mind doing homework if you're with your friends?
Well, most of the times I do mind, 'cause they're mostly peeking. What are you doing?
We'll check back in with Anna, April, and Jose a little later. Something tells me that Jose will definitely still be there. But you know, as unique as Teenscape is, the Central Library isn't the only place in town for teens to go. Every one of the city's 71 branches has special teen areas and activities each with their own personality. If you're a teenager, you can just drop by your local branch and ask the librarian when the next teen event is happening, or grab a bimonthly calendar and take a look. You'll meet a whole new group of people your own age, who understand why your jokes actually are funny after all, no matter what your little brother says. Now, there are far too many branches of the LA Public Library for Andrew to visit in just one show, but he did wanna get a little bit of a broader perspective on the teenage mind, so he got out a blindfold and a map, and ended up choosing the Eagle Rock Branch to find out what the teens were up to over there. Eagle Rock's young adult librarian, Patsy Penado-Tuck, is ready to give Andrew and you a little tour. Let's take a look.
This is the young adult section of the library, it's a very popular section of the library. It gets heavily used by our teens.
You have teen fiction over here. These are books that are really geared towards the types of things that teens like to read.
Absolutely, and we like to keep up to date with the current popular fiction, um, so, and I do canvas also opinion from the teens. I read reviews, I read books, I write reviews for...
Oh really?
...young adult literature. Yes, I'm part of the Young Adult Reviewers of Southern California. This, as it says, is our teen magazine area, so we like to keep our most current copies on top, often in the, in the plastic.
This is Nintendo Power, and then this is Riot BMX.
Riot BMX, yep.
You have some gamers here at the...
Oh absolutely, we do, we have lots of people interested in, in gaming.
What other kinds of events do you have here?
We have ongoing programs, and every year, Los Angeles Public Library offers a summer reading club, but throughout the year, we offer programs.
And you organize these programs through Teen Council?
A lot of them are organized through Teen Council, um, they're my advisory board, so they advise me on things that they'd like to see in the library. Welcome everybody, I just want to, um, think it would be a good idea if we go around the table and introduce ourselves, because there's some new faces here, and, um, people interested in possibly joining Teen Council.
Hi, I'm Margarita, I'm the president of Teen Council.
Hi, I'm Nico, I, I go to Eagle Rock High School, and I'm a member.
I'm Helen.
I'm Simone. I wanted to join today.
Hi, I'm Carol, I go to Eagle Rock High School, too, and I'm the secretary.
I'm Sophie, I'm the vice president.
I'm Miguel.
Hi, I'm Teresa.
I'm Angela, um, I'm her sister. I'm presi... Okay, I'm treasurer.
We've had, um, Shrinky Dink programs, craft programs.
Shrinky Dinks, are Shrinky Dinks still around?
You know what, I've brought them back, and, um, they're so popular with the teens. When I first introduced them to it, they hadn't a clue what I was talking about.
For those of you out there who don't know what Shrinky Dinks are, they're little plastic, like, uh...
It's like, it's basically like a sheet, it looks like a sheet of paper, you color it in, or whatever, and you put it in the oven, and it shrinks down.
Shrinks down to like a little hard plastic thing?
Right, hard plastic thing, and they love it, they put it on their keychains, they put it on their backpacks, they use them as charms.
So you're partially responsible for bringing Shrinky Dinks back into existence?
Maybe I can get a cut of the profits, yeah.
Well, I will call up whoever makes Shrinky Dinks, I'll, I'll look into it for you.
What made you guys decide to join Teen Council, how about you?
Well, I like the library a lot, I always go and read their books, and I like the programs that they hold, and I just like being a part of the library and the inner workings of it.
And is that why you decided to become a teenager, so that you could join Teen Council?
Partly, how'd you know?
We're going to be having an open-mic poetry night for National Poetry Month.
Will kids be reading some of their own poetry?
They are absolutely encouraged to read their own poetry, to do a rap, that sort of, you know, hip-hop poetry, they're encouraged to read poetry from their favorite poets.
We've had bake sales, we've had movie nights, we've had karaoke nights, we've had lanyard-making, we've had gingerbread house cooking and making.
We're, um, planning a library scavenger hunt that's upcoming this month.
Nico, since you are on Teen Council, will you be able to choose who wins the, uh, the scavenger hunt?
Yeah, I'm kidding!
So you can't just say, "I'm on Teen Council, and I say that I win!" You guys seem like you're having a lot of fun, but you're doing some important things, too. Now, you're president of the Teen Council.
Yep!
I would've voted for you, you seem like a very good president.
Thank you very much!
Uh, you think you might ever run for any other kind of president, like, say, President of the United States?
So the Teen Council meeting that you're having here today is the Teen Council for just this branch?
For just this branch. And if they don't live in the Eagle Rock area, um, they can call, um, any of the branches of Los Angeles Public Library, we can give them the number to their closest branch, so that they can find out about Teen Council opportunities at their local branch.
How long have you been with Teen Council?
Like, for over two months.
And you like it so far?
Very much, I love it.
Well, uh, looks like the teenagers here are having a lot of fun, and, uh, learning a lot, they're smart! Maybe you even have a hand in that.
Well, I, I, I wouldn't, you know, begin to take any credit for that, they're, they are lovely, they're, they are a joy to work with, and I just, I love my job, thank you so much! Thank you, thanks for coming by!
Teen Council is a great way for young people to get involved in the community, and make sure that the library stays up to date on what teens are really interested in. No one knows better than teenagers what the latest trends are in teen fiction, music, art, and culture. Plus, Teen Council is a fun way to learn how to collaborate with others and get things done, skills that will serve you your whole life. Members of Teen Council are the leaders of tomorrow, so contact the young adult librarian at your nearest branch to find out more information about your Teen Council. Now, let's head back over to Teenscape. You've seen how inviting the place is, but how do teens actually spend their time in there? Our trusty On The Spot reporter, Andrew Tarr, digs a little deeper. Let's listen in.
So what are some of the things that you guys do when you come here to Teenscape?
They just talk to other people who are your age.
We play guitar back there.
They actually let you play the guitar here?
They let us here, and some of the librarians play guitar with us sometimes, over in the They have CDs, um, you ask for one, if they don't have it, you'll order it.
You have magazines here that teenagers would actually be interested in?
Oh yeah, they have teen stuff, and they have all these girls, they, they go through it, they're in junior high, or in like ninth grade, and they start giggling, and there are little huddles, and it scares me.
Anna, is that true? You're, 'cause you're in junior high school right now, do you and your friends giggle a lot?
No, not really. We laugh, but like, not about those certain things.
No, you don't, okay. Have you heard this giggling thing go on? 'Cause I've heard...
Some girls, yeah, they do actually do that.
Jose, have you heard some of this giggling that April's talking about?
It's creepy. You'll be passing by, and they'll be giggling, and you're like, "Are they talking about me, or they're just talking about something else?"
What are some of the books you read?
Well, I like reading mangas.
You read a lot of those?
Yes, I do.
So April, how about you, do you ever read any manga?
Yes, I read a lot of it, I love reading, I read sci-fi, I read fiction, I read non-fiction, I read everything I can get my hands on, and this library has been able to provide that for me, especially Teenscape, the librarians here are so cool. I'm always bugging them for sci-fi books, I'm like, "Okay, get this book for me," and they're like, "They're not bugging me, we'll get it for you."
Virginia, I heard from certain teenagers here that you are very cool, is that true?
We are all cool. All the librarians in Teenscape are cool.
That's probably like a job requirement here.
Absolutely.
You have a lot of fun stuff going on here at Teenscape, you have, you know, this manga event today?
We're having animation artists, and a flipbook artist is coming next week, and we have Harry and the Potters, and Draco and the Malfoys, which are rock bands that do songs based on the Harry Potter books.
So you have actual concerts here?
That's correct.
In Teenscape, how cool is that?
We try to make it an interesting and fun place for everybody. Ordinarily, it's a place just for teens between 12 and 19, 'cause, you know, they just need to be comfortable and have a good time. We try to balance both leisure and homework, schoolwork, so we have a study area if they need to study and have it be a little bit quiet, or they can use the computers and make a lot of noise. The more teenagers here, the better we feel.
Cool, you heard it here, come on down, uh, but only if you're 12 to 19.
That's correct.
Otherwise, you're not a teenager, and come to the library, but Teenscape, you know, is really just for the teenagers. You probably can't tell on camera, but I'm not a teenager anymore. These kids I'm talking to really feel like they belong here.
And they do, they can come at any time, enjoy reading, talking to friends, playing music, watching movies, whatever it is that they wanna do.
One, two, one, two, three, four!
The teenagers are glad you're here, and...
I'm glad they're here, too, they're fantastic people. They have a lot to say, a lot on their minds, and they express themselves incredibly well. I enjoy talking to them.
Kids these days.
Your young adult librarian is the best source for teen information at your library. But what do you do if it's after hours, or your bike's in a shop, and your sister refuses to give you a ride? Not to worry, there's always Teen Web. Teen Web is your library's secret portal to just about anything you want to know about the library: getting your homework done, upcoming events, the hottest new books, the latest in sports, music, and much, much more. Teen Web even has games, a chance to speak out on teen issues, and links to information and assistance with some of the tough personal problems teenagers might need a little help with. To access Teen Web, all you have to do is go to the LA Public Library's main website, that's lapl.org, and click on Teen Web on the left side of your screen. Now, one of the best ways to expand young minds is through books and reading, and of course, the LA Public Library has no shortage of books, the collection just keeps on growing. But you can also develop strategic thinking, and learn new facts in almost any subject by something as seemingly non-studious as playing a board game. Believe it or not, Andrew's been invited back to the Eagle Rock Branch to observe the weekly teen game day. As long as he promised not to interfere with the outcome of the games, he has been known to do that. You guys are setting up these tables here, is this one of the games, is this like a table-setting-up game?
It's more exercise, you know?
Oh, it's an exercise. Liberty and Sylvia use a two-part strategy to set up the tables. They each take an end of the table, and they put the legs out of the table, and then they flip it up. It's a strategy that seems to work well, they've got four tables already set up, and they're doing it in record time. Teresa, what game are you playing here?
Connect Four.
Tell me a little bit about the object here, what are you, what are you trying to do with this game?
Okay, the object of the game is to basically, um, get four in a row, or four diagonal, to win, or to lose.
Does it have to be diagonal?
Um, no, it could be horizontal, vertical.
When I was a kid, my favorite thing about this game was the commercial with a brother and a sister playing the game, and the sister won in the commercial.
Where, I can't see her diagonally. Pretty sneaky, sis.
I've got big money on you for this game, so the pressure's on.
Okay, I win.
Where, I don't see...
Here, diagonally.
Pretty sneaky, sis. What's this game that you're playing here?
Uh, it's called Go To The Head Of The Class.
Does this game help you to like, get better in an actual classroom?
Yeah, it actually helps you with a lot of questions, there's math, history, geography, art, music, it's an educational game.
Is it fun?
Yeah, it's fun.
What kind of questions are there, can you ask me a question?
Sure. What, roll the dice?
Okay, I'm gonna roll, I'm gonna roll the dice here, I'm very good at rolling dice, I don't know if I've told you that, I'm an excellent dice roller. See, I got a number on both of them, uh, two and five.
What subject do you like, music, geography?
Oh, music, ask me a music question!
Okay.
You look here...
Yeah, and that's...
And that's the question, uh, so, it seems like it would be a pretty easy game if you could look, you could read the answer off of that thing.
I'm a teacher.
So you, you're the teacher in the game. What game are you playing here?
Los Angeles in a Box.
Los Angeles in a Box, now, where is the box? 'Cause Los Angeles is really big, so this isn't actually the city of Los Angeles in this box, this is just, that's the name of the game?
Yeah, it's kinda like Monopoly.
Good, 'cause for them to shrink down the entire city of Los Angeles, if it's in this box, probably would be dangerous, don't you think?
Yeah.
In what African country could you visit Cape Town, Durban, and Pretoria?
I'm going to say South Africa.
Yes, that is correct.
I got that right, so I, I, if I was playing this game, I would be closer to winning now than before. What game are you guys playing here?
Sorry.
No, no, that's okay, I just wanna know what game you're playing.
We're playing Sorry!
No, I'm sure you're playing fine, what's the name of the game, though, that you're playing?
The name of the game is Sorry!
The name of the game is Sorry, I see, it says it right there, Sorry! Do you have a favorite game when you come to game day?
Not really.
Just like all the different games?
Yeah.
How about you Miguel, what's your favorite game?
Uh, well, we usually play this game, or we socialize, it depends.
Do you like games?
Yeah.
No, probably 'cause you're winning, it's easier, no, it's easier to like a game if, if you're winning. For example, let me show you something, remember I got that question right, and that was really fun? Ask me another question.
I'll ask you a math question.
A math question.
What is the value of x if 4 over 7 equals 6 over x?
See, that's a lot less fun. What do you like better, the library or the dry cleaners?
Library.
What do you like better, to come to the library or the gas station?
The library, because you'll never get bored at the library, there's always some people to do.
You heard Anna, April, and Jose talk about manga, the graphic novels that started in Japan and have swept the entire world by storm. Manga is the marriage of pictures and the printed word to tell stories in a visually dynamic way. Teens just love manga, and it's got them reading stories like never before. So the Los Angeles Public Library invited Amy Kim Ganter, a manga artist and author, to come to Teenscape and give LA's young manga fans a look behind the scenes of her latest book, Sorcerers and Secretaries.
I fell in love with manga when I was about your guys' age, I think, are you guys around 15 or 16? Coming to the library was a big part of me deciding to do comics for a living, because I read Understanding Comics by Scott MacLeod. Anybody here draw at all? Yeah? Have you guys ever used Photoshop? Yeah? I love that program, it's really great. That's my book, Sorcerers and Secretaries, it takes place in New York City, which I lived in for like 10 years, and, uh, the main character there is Nicole, she's kinda like me, she likes to write fantasy stuff, but, um, she is actually a business student. This is by no means the only way to draw, I'm just, this is just how I draw. I, I sketch a little circle so that I know where the head is. The sorcerer is supposed to look like an innocent little boy, so he's kinda wide-eyed, and he's got, he's got thick eyebrows, but they're a soft shape. I always start with the eyes, 'cause the eyes are the windows to the soul. Then I got my typical anime nose. There's a smile, and I'm done, no, I'm just kidding. When I was in high school, I knew I couldn't draw bodies properly, like, arms would be really long, and like, fingers would be really stubby and short and stuff, and I was like, "Man, this doesn't look right," and I don't want my character to look like, bad like this, so... And I don't want my character to look like bad like this, so I brought this book from the library called Drawing the Head and Figure by Jack Ham. Have you guys seen that book? It's a perfect crash course for like really basic anatomy, really basic clothing folds and stuff. It was a great resource for me.
I followed along as you were teaching. Do you think that this would be good enough to go in the book?
Maybe as a fan art in the back.
You can find Amy's book on Tokyopop.com. How would you describe what manga is?
Manga is basically just a Japanese term for Japanese comics. It literally means entertaining visual.
This is your book right here. Sorcerers and Secretaries, great title by the way.
Thank you.
This is thicker than your average, than like a comic book. There's more story here. It seems to me that this would get teenagers especially to spend a little bit more time with a book. You know, in our fast-paced culture, it's nice to sometimes read a longer story. Do you have to be a teenager to get into manga and-
Definitely not.
...storybooks like this?
Definitely not. There's comics and manga for adults. There's one called Monsters, which is about a E.R. drama. It's awesome. There's a comic called Akira, which is a post-apocalyptic sci-fi story, and it's definitely for adults.
A lot of the manga that I've seen has been a lot of sword fighting and galactic battles and things like that. And then I guess there's also some horror, like-
Yeah, there's all kinds of genres. I mean, it's not any one type.
And this is a romantic comedy?
Yeah.
And do you do any of the sort of the horror, the creepy horrors?
I wish I could. I can't, you know? I'm a real like goody-two-shoes and sweetheart inside, so when I try drawing stuff like that, it just looks like Teletubbies like fighting or something. It totally doesn't, it's not scary at all.
Well, you know, romantic comedies can be scary, especially, you know-
Get your heart working.
Depending on the relationship.
Yeah.
It can be very, very frightening. Can you show us a little bit of how to draw some of these manga characters?
I usually start out with the eyes.
I noticed that all of your characters have eyes.
Definitely.
Could you put some words on here too? Have him say something maybe like, Andrew is great? I just pull those words out of a-
Okay, I'm gonna make his mouth open then. Andrew is great.
Amy, thank you so much. And hey, come down to the library. They got all kinds of great manga down here for you to read for yourself.
Free mangas, Manga Madness.
She signed my book and she signed this picture she did for me. That was fun.
Do you think you get listened to more here at the library than out in the real world?
Yeah.
Yes.
Eventually, you're not going to be teenagers anymore. Will you still come to the library?
Yeah.
Yes.
I want to thank you guys for talking to me today.
You're welcome.
The teenagers of today are the adults of tomorrow. And the world that keeps us young people intellectually stimulated, fulfilled, and happy is a world with a truly bright future. The Los Angeles Public Library prides itself on being a place where teens can go to feel valued and respected. Teenagers belong at the L.A. Public Library. And if you're a teen, or if you know one, spread the word. There's a super cool place where your mind really does matter. The Los Angeles Public Library really is the great Teenscape. I'd like to thank our on-the-spot reporter Andrew Tark and all the teenagers who took the time to talk with them today. I'd also like to thank city librarian Fontaine Holmes, the young adult librarians of Central Library and Eagle Rock Branch, Virginia Lo and Patsy Panedo Tuck, and Tokyopop's manga artist, Amy Kim Ganter. And to all you adults out there, remember, treat those teenagers right. Someday, you just might have to ask them for a raise. Thanks for visiting us here at your library. I'm Franklin Delano Neely. See you next time.
In L.A. This Week. I'm Anna Marcos. Find out how the city's new high-tech parking meters could make pocket change obsolete. That's coming up. Young musicians show off their talent. We'll take you to a concert filled with Latin flavor straight ahead. And the city of Los Angeles is feeling the pinch from the writer's strike. And it's not just the writers who are impacted. Find out how the local economy has been affected, coming up. Hello and welcome to L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. The Writers Guild strike has had a significant impact on the economy of Los Angeles. Small businesses and the city as a whole have all been affected. Saeda Pagan reports on how city leaders recently intervened.
More than 100 Writers Guild of America members crowded this hearing room at the Los Angeles City Hall. Dressed in red t-shirts, they came to give the city council firsthand accounts of the impact of the strike on their lives. Betsy Thomas heads up a television writing team.
My writers drive Hondas and Toyotas and we're middle-class. And I just wanted to put a face to this.
Also in attendance were small business owners who rely heavily on the entertainment industry.
We made immediate cuts when the writers went out in November. All six part-time staff members were laid off. All overtime, cut.
Council members held the hearing after receiving hundreds of requests from Writers Guild members.
Some of you have said in your emails that you can't pay your rent because you're not making a living right now. And I think that that's just awful.
The film industry is the third-largest employer in Los Angeles County, generating $46.8 billion each year. With an average of 200 employees attached to each production, the impact of the strike has gone beyond to the writers. The city of Los Angeles stands to lose quite a bit because of this strike. The film industry brings in tens of millions of dollars in sales revenue each year. Economists say the ripple effect will be felt most in certain areas of the city.
The strike will not kill the L.A. economy, but it will certainly act as a brake on the L.A. County economy. And for the city of Los Angeles, you have significant risk because of the industry's concentration in and around the community of Hollywood.
And council members say they are very concerned.
It's about the average person. And I mean, so I'm just saying, even though it may not appear to be that big, but to some mom and pop restaurant or as Jack says, some little, those are the people that I really care about.
Negotiators for the writers say their fight for residuals in the area of new media has been necessary to protect their rights. As for the other side of the story, council members say they invited the producers to speak at the hearing, but their offer was not accepted. For L.A. This Week, I'm Saeda Pagan.
Three years ago, L.A. voters passed Proposition O, a bond which allocates a half-billion dollars to fund projects that protect public health and clean up our waterways. As Patrick Rody tells us, it's money well spent.
The city has more than 50,000 storm drains. Thanks to Proposition O money, around 22,000 of them have been fitted with catch basin screens and inserts to help keep trash from getting into our water. A lot of people don't realize that when they throw trash on the street, there's a very good chance it will end up in the ocean.
That's why we're putting the catch basin covers to capture the trash before it goes to the ocean, because we want the ocean to be nice and clean and healthy for everyone.
The city uses high-tech vacuum trucks, like this one, to suck up the trash that's caught in storm drains.
It's a beautiful piece of equipment, works well. Each one of these trucks can clean 50 different drains in one day. With 20 trucks out there, that means 1,000 drains are being cleaned every single day in Los Angeles. And every drain will be cleaned three times in a year.
These trucks have prevented more than 1,500 tons of trash from getting into the ocean. And the crews who work on them have seen it all.
You find everything in there, trash, cups, bottles, anything you see people just discard out their cars when the rain comes, whatever the water washes in there.
Officials stressed that the easiest way to deal with pollution is to not pollute in the first place.
Best thing we can do is change our own behavior. The reason we have to spend a half-billion dollars is because many of us are out there in Los Angeles and we don't see and we don't pick up the trash or people are littering. And so human behavior can stop the problem before it happens.
The city is set to start putting catch basin screens and inserts on the rest of our storm drains starting in early 2008. I'm Patrick Rody for L.A. This Week.
Proposition O passed overwhelmingly in November 2004 with 76% of the vote. And speaking of cleaning up the environment, the L.A. Convention Center has taken the city's challenge to become more earth-friendly. The Convention Center has put its money where its mouth is by purchasing biodegradable utensils for all of the convention's restaurants. Anna Marcos takes a look.
Take your pick, sugarcane pulp, bamboo, wheat chaff, and corn and palm fiber. Sound like a trendy menu? Well, it is when it comes to using eco-friendly products. These are the ingredients in the new plateware and cutlery that the L.A. Convention Center is using in its 11 cafes and restaurants.
To be able to implement a 100% ecologically friendly program is significant in terms of reducing our footprint, our output, and to reuse what we use so that we don't add to landfills.
These spoons and forks are made out of soy and vegetable starch. The plates, corn, potatoes, and limestone. And once you're done with them, they go in the compost bin. In a few weeks, they turn into soil along with a trash bag which is made out of sugarcane.
Give it six months and you would not see anything left of these materials. It would be totally back to the environment.
Ditching the plastics for sustainable plateware apparently helps not only the environment, but the budget.
There really is a savings. And now the oil is up over or close to $100 a barrel right now. As oil is rising, the sugar products are still remaining steady. So the cost now is actually less expensive than the oil products.
The Convention Center is now teaming up with the Bureau of Sanitation to send 50% of its waste to a food waste diversion program to be converted to topsoil. Oh, did we mention the free-range meat and chicken and locally raised produce? It seems one of the city's premier money-making machines just turned into an earth-friendly zone. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Convention Center estimates it will compost or recycle 139,000 pounds of food waste that would otherwise have gone to landfills. Turning to technology and crime, Los Angeles police are using the Global Positioning System to help control gang violence in the city. But as Saeda Pagan tells us, this GPS system has nothing to do with finding directions and everything to do with tracking criminals.
Los Angeles police have been using the Global Positioning System for a while to monitor the actions of sex offenders. The offenders wear ankle bracelets much like this one. But recently, police have placed bracelets on alleged gang members as well. Minutes after the drive-by shooting of 20-year-old Nelly Varaga, a suspect wearing one of the GPS devices was tracked down and quickly apprehended.
One of the passengers in the vehicle was later identified as John Garcia, was a documented MS-13 gang member. Garcia was tracked to a residence in the city of Parkland. He was wearing one of these bracelets.
With the victim's grieving family at their side, members of the LAPD's Real-Time Analysis and Critical Response Division talked about how effective the technology has proven.
Within a half hour, we had detectives conducting surveillance on that vehicle and the suspects, which led to their arrest in a very timely fashion.
Detectives conducting the investigation were so impressed with the GPS that they have high hopes for its potential as a crime-fighting tool.
I've never run into anything like this, ever. And I think that we should definitely have more bracelets on these people. It would probably solve much more crimes.
Chief William Bratton says he hopes to utilize the technology even more so in coming months when the city's new emergency operations center opens. For L.A. This Week, I'm Saeda Pagan.
The LAPD says gang crime is going down and the GPS devices will help further the decline. What will L.A. look like in five years, 20 years, 50 years? The choices we make now will determine what kind of Los Angeles we leave our kids and grandkids. Patrick Rody tells us about a unique conference designed to help us decide what the L.A. of the future will look like.
For this goal-
Downtown's Biltmore Hotel played host to a conference called The Livable City: Shaping California's Future, which was put on by the Pat Brown Institute of Public Affairs. People here agreed that Los Angeles and the entire state has a lot to deal with in the years ahead.
L.A. has many challenges, including the traffic that everybody faces, the issues of employment, the housing crisis that we have in terms of affordable housing. So there are a number of challenges that we're looking at at this point. Achieving or meeting the goals of any one of those would take by itself a fundamental change in the way we do things.
Californians need to be innovative in order to pull the resources, the talent, and the imagination of the state together so that we can reinvent ourselves for this century.
So what makes a city livable?
I think it starts in the hearts of the individuals, us all having a sense of community and understanding that what we do and do not do and allow affect everybody around us.
For Mayor Vieragoso, there's no doubt the most important issue in making L.A. a more livable city is education.
Our kids have to be able to read and write. Our economic competitiveness is predicated on them being able to read and write.
This was the 15th year the Pat Brown Institute held a California Policy Issues Conference at the Biltmore Hotel in downtown Los Angeles. I'm Patrick Rody for L.A. This Week.
The Pat Brown Institute is named after the late Edmund G. Pat Brown, who was governor of California from 1959 to 1967. Parking meters in L.A. are taking a quantum leap into the 21st century with a new invention called Park and Pay. As Anna Marcos reports, the new technology gives motorists more payment choices and gives the city a more efficient way to collect on running meters.
Scrounging around for pocket change, broken meters that don't work, city workers promise it will all soon be a thing of the past as they test the new Easy Park/Easy Pay machines on motorists. Two of the machines are up and running at this North Hollywood city parking lot. The two machines, which cover all the parking spaces in the lot, take credit cards and debit cards as well as change.
It's convenient for the meter maids, so... But does it accept credit cards or is it just ones? Oh, okay, so that's cool.
Oh, you forgot credit cards and you're out of change, you say? No problem. Just dial a registration number, register your phone and credit card, and in the future, you can pay just by dialing in. A text message on your phone even notifies you when the time is running out on your meter. City leaders are confident the new meters will solve the parking meter blues for both motorists and the city.
Coming to a community near you, there's going to be brand-new parking meters that are going to be reliable, responsible, and easy to use.
Still, even the most high-tech machines get a glitch now and then, as this one did. The keypad numbers got stuck, which put the machine out of commission. City workers had to direct customers to the other machine on the lot. The city plans to replace 6,000 of its 40,000 parking meters by next spring. And if this high-tech program is successful, all parking meters could be replaced within two years. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
City workers say the parking rates will stay the same under the new technology. One local community has a vision for a historical landmark, and with the help of the city, that landmark is getting a makeover. Rasha Goel has more. Rasha Goel has more.
City leaders joined the Lamarck Park community to announce additional major funding that would help complete Lamarck Park's Vision Theater renovation plan, a plan to reopen the 1930s theater that has been closed for several years.
This community continues to be a thriving, bustling community, but it needs support.
Through the city's resources and various grants accumulated, something in the neighborhood about $7 million for this facility. Now this additional $2.4 million gets us well on our way to the ultimate goal of completing Phase 1 and 2.
The $2.4 million has been awarded by the California Cultural and Historical Endowment Board and is the largest amount granted to any single project.
This is one of those functions, one of those fabrics, one of those pieces that makes up the history of California.
According to city leaders, the renovation of the historic cultural landmark will also help rebuild the business community.
By re-establishing the Vision Theater as a cultural centerpiece to this area, we would help these small businesses and create an economic boom for the Lamarck Park community.
The theater will be adapted to serve as a showcase venue for events, films, exhibits, and much more.
This theater in this area called Lamarck Park is viewed as the cornerstone and the centerpiece of black culture in the city of Los Angeles.
The investment in this area, in the Vision Theater, should be just the beginning of the vision we see for this community as a destination for all people in Los Angeles.
Renovations are scheduled to begin in mid-2008. In Lamarck Park, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Vision Theater has been around since the 1930s and was purchased by the city in 2000. The newly renovated theater is expected to open in 2010. In a little more than a year, senior citizens in South Los Angeles will have a new place to call home. Patrick Rody has the details.
This stretch of the Tenth Freeway, where it meets Crenshaw Boulevard, is named the Rosa Parks Freeway. And in a little more than a year, this vacant lot will be home to the Rosa Parks Villas, named after the late civil rights icon. On December 1, 1955, Rosa Parks was arrested after she refused to give up her seat on a public bus to a white person. Her act of defiance and courage helped spark the modern civil rights movement in the United States.
She never felt that what she did was anything special. She just said, "I did what I had to do." And this being named after her would give her pride, but I don't think that she would consider that, even that she was worthy of something like this.
This is a very important day that the Lord has made. This is a very important day for this community. This is a very important day for the Crenshaw Corridor.
When the Rosa Parks Villas open here, in about fifteen months, there'll be around 100 people living in sixty units. Most of those units will be one-bedroom, but twelve of them will have two bedrooms. And the complex will offer all the extras, like several TV lounges, a laundry room, and a gym. Everything seniors need to feel at home.
Most people don't realize we're really talking about our parents and our grandparents who worked hard, who tried to save, but the value of the dollar does not allow them to do what they want to do. And here, they'll have the quality of life they planned for and can afford.
The Rosa Parks Villas are slated to open in March 2009. In South Los Angeles, I'm Patrick Rody for LA This Week.
The rent at Rosa Parks Villas will range anywhere from around $400 to almost $1,000 a month. A council member steps up to fight for federal transit dollars while Los Angeles will be seeing an increase in Chinese tourists, and the mayor's commitment to low-performing schools comes to fruition. Rasha Goel has these stories and more in City Beat.
Councilmember Wendy Gruel is leading the fight for the city's fair share of federal transit dollars. Gruel is seeking $35 million in federal transit funds for projects, including enhanced dash service and global positioning systems for commuter express lines. Gruel says Los Angeles has been short-changed in receiving funding for too long and urges the U.S. Department of Transportation to remedy the situation. The mayor's office expects the number of Chinese tourists visiting the city of Los Angeles to increase 50% by early 2009, thanks to an agreement recently signed at the U.S.-China Joint Commission on Commerce and Trade in Beijing. The mayor himself paid a visit to China in the fall of 2006 to strengthen the relationship between China and Los Angeles. The agreement signed by the U.S. Commerce Secretary Carlos Gutierrez will make it easier for Chinese citizens to obtain visas to visit the United States. The plan will go into effect next spring. A victory for the mayor's latest bid to be involved in the management of the LA Unified School District. Seven schools voted in favor of joining Mayor Antonio Vieragoso's Partnership for LA Schools. The partnership gives participating schools more autonomy and decision-making powers regarding curriculum and budget.
By voting to join the partnership, parents and teachers said yes to lower dropout rates, a yes to higher student achievement, and yes to safer campuses.
I'm excited because we're going to have an opportunity to decide who's going to work at our school, what types of teaching and learning is going to take place, what types of services and resources our students are going to get.
The partnership was approved by parents and teachers at Roosevelt, Santee, and Jordan High Schools, and Hollenbeck, Stevenson, Markham, and Gompers Middle Schools. The LAPD recently launched its Seventh Annual Angels Community Book and Toy Drive. It's a collection drive to ensure some 80 kindergarten students from Barra los Niños Charter School received gifts during the holiday season. Toy manufacturer Hasbro Incorporated donated 1,000 toys for the drive. With City Beat, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Every year, the LAPD selects a different school to receive the donated gifts. You've never seen LA City Council President Eric Garcetti quite like this before. He not only sings a song, but also does the Macarena. Patrick Rody explains why.
Dozens of people showed up at the Glassell Park Senior Center for their first-ever end-of-the-year celebration, which honored their council member, Eric Garcetti, and he returned the favor.
These seniors have given so much to our city, and this is a small way of us giving something back. But to see them moving and laughing and celebrating and singing, you know, this is what the holidays are about.
The Department of Recreation and Parks holds classes year-round at the center, and this event was a chance for these seniors to strut their stuff.
Just celebrating the holidays, but really what it is, is it brings together the different classes that go on throughout the year, and they actually highlight it in front of all of the rest of the seniors. So I think that's just a great interaction of what we're doing.
One of the highlights of this event was the wall premiere of a brand-new piece of music written and performed by Councilmember Garcetti.
Glassell Park, a senior center with spark. We've got lots of cheer. It's the time of year. I'm in Glassell Park, and I'm glad I'm here. I'm trained as a composer and a pianist, and so I figured the best gift of all for these seniors would be to write them a song. So I wrote them a little song about how great Glassell Park is, and it captures, I hope, everything that is the spirit of that room and the spirit of this community, which is unlike almost any other in Los Angeles.
Councilmember Garcetti also got the chance to show off some pretty smooth dance moves.
I think it surprised him. We wanted to surprise him, and I don't know, I don't think he knew that he was going to go out there and dance, but he did a very good job.
And it looks like the residents of Glassell Park think their council member is doing a good job off the dance floor as well. I'm Patrick Rody for LA This Week.
To find out more about the programs offered at the Glassell Park Senior Center or at any of the other senior centers around Los Angeles, you can log on to the Department of Recreation and Parks website at www.laparks.org. The LA Parks website is a great resource, but so is our city guy, Andrew Tarr. He's here with some great ideas on things to do in this new year.
Hi, I'm Andrew Tarr, the city guy, with this week's list of things to do. Last month, here on LA This Week, we reported that the new year was to begin on January 1st. However, it's been brought to my attention that the new year will not actually commence until January 18 through the 20th at the fabulous Nokia Theater at LA Live Downtown. I take full responsibility for the error. You see, I've never been very good at math, but that's okay, because one thing I am good at is finding fun things to do, like the Chinese New Year Spectacular. Presented by New Tang Dynasty Television, this celebration of Chinese music, dance, and culture is going to be so spectacular, they put the word "spectacular" right in the name. They even put it in the address of the website. Go to la-spectacular.com to find out more. Ever since I saw The Wizard of Oz as a child, I was under the impression that the Wicked Witch of the West was mean-spirited and vindictive. But it was recently brought to my attention that she's merely wicked, which is actually a trait I've always found rather appealing. I regret coming to this false conclusion, and I take full responsibility for the error. I learned the truth about Elphaba, the Wicked Witch of the West, by watching the mesmerizing and wonderful musical documentary, Wicked!, at the Pantages Theater in Hollywood. It's not only one of the most successful shows in Broadway history, it's also one of the biggest hits ever to grace the stage here in Los Angeles, where we've always appreciated women who are misunderstood and a little bit wicked. It's been here for a while, but Wicked! only runs through March, so don't let it pass you by. Go to wickedthemusical.com/LA. If one of your New Year's resolutions was to experience more new and interesting art, culture, and entertainment this year, you're in luck, because Saturday, January 12, the Gallery Theater at Barnstall Art Park welcomes the very first Amazig Film Festival. The Amazig people, also known as Berbers, are indigenous people of North Africa between Western Egypt and the Atlantic Ocean. And not only are these films Amazig, they're also amazing. Don't worry, all the films at the festival will have subtitles, and I guarantee there'll be nothing like you've ever seen before. This is a must-see event for any artist stuck in a creative rut. For more information, go to laaff.org. And what do you get when you combine electronic psychedelia with multiple layers of technology, urban culture, and pop music? I can't tell you, but you can see and hear for yourself when Tokyo's Cornelius performs Man-Machine in the Digital City at the Walt Disney Concert Hall. Joined by British duo Plaid's digitalized abstract musical art, Cornelius delivers beat-heavy melodies along with wildly experimental visuals. Find out more at lafill.com. I'm Andrew Tarr, the city guy, and I'll be back next week with even more things to do.
Thanks, Andrew. Music LA is reaching kids in some of LA's neediest neighborhoods. One such program in Highland Park has turned some kids into bona fide musicians. Here's Anna Marcos.
You're hearing the Cole Porter jazz standard, Night and Day, with a spicy Brazilian bossa nova twist. The kids at the Lalo Guerrero School of Music strut, strum, and play their way through a medley of decidedly Latin-flavored performances in honor of their Latino heritage.
Not only have they been exposed to and learned these different types of Latin music, they also, I think, their self-esteem has increased greatly. They seem more confident, and now after this performance, I mean, they're just beaming with pride.
This event is part of the Music LA Program sponsored by Disney to expose underprivileged kids to music and cultural activities they might not otherwise get.
The program's done a lot of things for me. It's kept me busy after school so that, you know, I wouldn't be out on the streets doing irresponsible things.
First, my friend, my next neighbor, was showing me all these moves, for both of us, and then we started learning, and then she took us to the dance, and then we knew
And the show definitely draws an audience. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The event took place at the Bushnell Elementary School Auditorium in Highland Park. The community of Venice is nothing if not diverse, and recently, the U.S. Post Office paid tribute to the man who founded the place many artists call home. Patrick Rody has the details.
Venice was founded by author and world traveler Abbott Kinney, who wanted to make an American version of Venice, Italy, here in California. When the Post Office announced they were issuing a stamp to honor Kinney, along with unveiling a mural depicting him, it brought out a crowd as eclectic as the community he founded.
Venice, oh Venice, oh hear our voices ring.
A peaceful home, every race, green and color, under the sun. Venice, where art and commerce mingle freely as nowhere else.
Venice Beach, California, Carnival by the sea. Venice Beach, California, where the freaks are you and me.
This tribute is a welcome reminder of how the arts serve to nourish the roots of our culture, providing us with pride in our shared heritage and a foundation for our universal future.
On behalf of the mayor of Los Angeles and the residents of Los Angeles, congratulations on this special event. It's always great to see how art can bring a community together, and I think Venice captures that essence.
Three, two, one.
This mural, which is called Story of Venice, is identical to one on display in the lobby of the Venice Main Post Office. I'm Patrick Rody for LA This Week.
The mural was originally commissioned and installed in 1941, but it was never dedicated. If you'd like to see it for yourself, the post office is at 1601 Main Street in Venice. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. LA City View Channel 35.
You're watching Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events. Brought to you by LA City View Channel 35 and the Department of Neighborhood and Power, airing Monday through Friday at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events provides the latest information about meetings and events sponsored by all neighborhood councils throughout Los Angeles. Information listed on this service may be subject to change without prior notice, so please call the contact phone number listed for the meeting to confirm the event. This listing covers an advanced two-week period. If you need additional information or require a meeting schedule for dates not listed on this segment, please log on to the city's website at www.lacity.org and click on City Events Calendar. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Council toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Council toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. You're watching Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events. Brought to you by LA City View Channel 35 and the Department of Neighborhood and Power, airing Monday through Friday at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events provides the latest information about meetings and events sponsored by all neighborhood councils throughout Los Angeles. Information listed on this service may be subject to change without prior notice, so please call the contact phone number listed for the meeting to confirm the event. This listing covers an advanced two-week period. If you need additional information or require a meeting schedule for dates not listed on this segment, please log on to the city's website at www.lacity.org and click on City Events Calendar. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Council toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Council toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. You're watching Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events. Brought to you by LA City View Channel 35 and the Department of Neighborhood and Power, airing Monday through Friday at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Neighborhood Council's Calendar of Events provides the latest information about meetings and events sponsored by all neighborhood councils throughout Los Angeles. Information listed on this service may be subject to change without prior notice, so please call the contact phone number listed for the meeting to confirm the event. If you need more information about how you can get involved with your community's neighborhood council, please call the Department of Neighborhood Council toll-free at 866-LA-HELPS. You're watching Adopt a Friend for Life, presented by City of Los Angeles, LA City View 35, and Animal Service Department. Adopting an animal is a wonderful way to add a new family member to your home. When thinking about adopting an animal, please remember to plan ahead and consider your lifestyle. It's important to consider your lifestyle to make sure you, your family, and your new pet are happy. Here are some questions to ask. How large an animal is right for your home? Do you have a yard for a large dog or a patio for a smaller animal? How active an animal do you want?
Do you want an active dog or a sedentary cat? How much time do you have to care for an animal? Do you want an animal with short hair or one with longer hair? How often do you go out of town? Who will care for the animal while you're away? Do you have small children or older ones who will be involved in the care of your animal? Remember, responsible pet ownership means you will have the time to care for and socialize with your animal. It means that you're willing to make the commitment to care for your new family member. Adopting a dog means a commitment anywhere from 10 to 16 years. Adopting a cat means a commitment anywhere from 15 to 20 years. If you see an animal you'd like to adopt, please write down the animal's impound number and immediately call the number on your screen to make sure the animal is still available. Remember, the sooner you call and go to your animal shelter, the greater the chance you'll be able to adopt that animal. Adoption fees vary. All adoption fees include vaccinations, physical examinations, spaying or neutering, and license registration. Your animal will also receive its first medical examination free when you bring it to a member of the Southern California Veterinary Association. Simply bring in your animal within three days from the date of adoption and present your adoption receipt. All dogs and cats eight weeks or older must be surgically sterilized before you can take them home. Spaying or neutering ensures your pet will live a longer and healthier life and will not be a safety and financial burden to your community. If your adopted animal is already sterilized, you may immediately take the animal home after completing the adoption process. If your adopted animal is not sterilized, L.A. Animal Services will transport your pet to a private veterinarian for a physical examination and sterilization. The veterinarians will contact you prior to surgery to discuss any medical concerns, additional related fees, and other options. Once spayed or neutered, you must go to the veterinary clinic to pick up your pet. We hope you find an animal compatible with your lifestyle. Enrich your life with an animal from a city shelter, and you'll know you also saved a life. You're watching Adopt a Friend for Life, presented by City of Los Angeles, L.A. City View 35, and Animal Service Department. Adopting an animal is a wonderful way to add a new family member to your home. When thinking about adopting an animal, please remember to plan ahead and consider your lifestyle. It's important to consider your lifestyle to make sure you, your family, and your new pet are happy. Here are some questions to ask. How large an animal is right for your home? Do you have a yard for a large dog or a patio for a smaller animal? How active an animal do you want? Do you want an active dog or a sedentary cat? How much time do you have to care for an animal? Do you want an animal with short hair or one with longer hair? How often do you go out of town? Who will care for the animal while you're away? Do you have small children or older ones who will be involved in the care of your animal? Remember, responsible pet ownership means you will have the time to care for and socialize with your animal. It means that you're willing to make the commitment to care for your new family member. Adopting a dog means a commitment anywhere from 10 to 16 years. And adopting a cat means a commitment anywhere from 15 to 20 years. If you see an animal you'd like to adopt, please write down the animal's impound number and immediately call the number on your screen. It's time you considered the City of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you considered the City of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you considered the City of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you considered the City of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you considered the City of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. It's time you considered the City of Los Angeles as an employer. With more than 30,000 employees and hundreds of job classifications, the City of Los Angeles has the position and advancement opportunities that you're looking for. The City of Los Angeles is an equal opportunity employer. If you're looking for a great job with excellent benefits, please consider these listings carefully. If you're interested in any one of the jobs listed here, please call the Personnel Department at 213-847-9240 for more information and an application. You're watching Crime Watch, brought to you by the City of Los Angeles Police Department and L.A. City View 35. The City of Los Angeles is offering the following rewards for information leading to the identity, arrest, and prosecution of the person or persons responsible for committing the crime. The deadline for each reward is seen on your screen, accompanied by the phone number and the detective handling the case. Basic information about the victim and the crime, such as date and place, is stated. However, complete information surrounding the crime may be only discussed on the phone with a detective assigned to the case. If you have any information that might assist the LAPD in solving this crime, you're urged to contact the number on your screen. Each investigation is filed under a number which is also on your screen. You will need to refer to this number when calling the detectives with your information. If you wish to provide anonymous tips regarding a crime that you may have information about, please call the number on your screen. However, anonymous witnesses will not receive the award. You're watching Crime Watch, brought to you by the City of Los Angeles Police Department and L.A. City View 35. The City of Los Angeles is offering the following rewards for information leading to the identity, arrest, and prosecution of the person or persons responsible for committing the crime. The deadline for each reward is seen on your screen, accompanied by the phone number and the detective handling the case. Basic information about the victim and the crime, such as date and place, is stated. However, complete information surrounding the crime may be only discussed on the phone with a detective assigned to the case. If you have any information that might assist the LAPD in solving this crime, you're urged to contact the number on your screen. Each investigation is filed under a number which is also on your screen. You will need to refer to this number when calling the detectives with your information. If you wish to provide anonymous tips regarding a crime that you may have information about, please call the number on your screen. However, anonymous witnesses will not receive the award. You're watching Crime Watch, brought to you by the City of Los Angeles Police Department and L.A. City View 35. The City of Los Angeles is offering the following rewards for information leading to the identity, arrest, and prosecution of the person or persons responsible for committing the crime. The deadline for each reward is seen on your screen, accompanied by the phone number and the detective handling the case. Basic information about the victim and the crime, such as date and place, is stated. However, complete information surrounding the crime may be only discussed on the phone with a detective assigned to the case. If you have any information that might assist the LAPD in solving this crime, you're urged to contact the number on your screen. Each investigation is filed under a number which is also on your screen. You will need to refer to this number when calling the detectives with your information.
You are watching Community Calendar, brought to you by L.A. City View Channel 35 and the participating departments of the City of Los Angeles. You can watch Community Calendar weekdays, Monday through Friday, at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Tune in to find out what the city is doing in your neighborhoods. From community festivals, parades, and neighborhood cleanups to official city meetings, public hearings, and other important activities that you want to know about. All announcements are for an advanced two-week period. For city activities prior to this two-week period, log on to www.lacity.org and follow the link to citywide calendar and agendas. If you are interested in a particular announcement and wish to receive more detailed information, call the phone number listed for the event or log on to the city's homepage at www.lacity.org. L.A. City View Channel 35 is pleased to bring this program to our viewers. If you've missed any portion of this segment, please call 213-485-7561 for additional information. You are watching Community Calendar, brought to you by L.A. City View Channel 35 and the participating departments of the City of Los Angeles. You can watch Community Calendar weekdays, Monday through Friday, at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Tune in to find out what the city is doing in your neighborhoods. From community festivals, parades, and neighborhood cleanups to official city meetings, public hearings, and other important activities that you want to know about. All announcements are for an advanced two-week period. For city activities prior to this two-week period, log on to www.lacity.org and follow the link to citywide calendar and agendas. If you are interested in a particular announcement and wish to receive more detailed information, call the phone number listed for the event or log on to the city's homepage at www.lacity.org. L.A. City View Channel 35 is pleased to bring this program to our viewers. If you've missed any portion of this segment, please call 213-485-7561 for additional information. You are watching Community Calendar, brought to you by L.A. City View Channel 35 and the participating departments of the City of Los Angeles. You can watch Community Calendar weekdays, Monday through Friday, at 8:00 a.m., 12:30 p.m., 5:30 p.m., and 11:00 p.m. Tune in to find out what the city is doing in your neighborhoods. From community festivals, parades, and neighborhood cleanups to official city meetings, public hearings, and other important activities that you want to know about. All announcements are for an advanced two-week period. For city activities prior to this two-week period, log on to www.lacity.org and follow the link to citywide calendar and agendas.
Dedication.
Intensity.
Passion.
Finding something you love and learning how to do it well.
Each year, the Music Center of Los Angeles County presents the Spotlight Awards Program, a scholarship and arts training opportunity in the performing and visual arts. Spotlight begins with applicants from high schools all across Southern California. Performing arts students can participate in six categories: ballet, non-classical dance, classical voice, non-classical voice, classical instrumental, and jazz instrumental music. Two visual arts categories are also offered: two-dimensional Two visual arts categories are also offered: two-dimensional design and photography.
But this isn't a typical competition. It's not about a quick audition and then going home to wait for the results. Spotlight is all about building confidence and developing your skills in the arts with advice and mentoring from professionals, master classes from world-renowned artists, and, for the finalists, an amazing opportunity to perform on the stage of the Music Center's Dorothy Chandler Pavilion.
The Spotlight Awards Program is about believing in yourself, working hard, and achieving your artistic dreams. For performing arts students, Spotlight begins on the local level, at auditions throughout Southern California. Every student who auditions receives written feedback and advice on improving his or her audition. For the top artists, earning a place in the semifinals means an opportunity to learn from the masters.
The class today was to give us a chance to, you know, dance with a famous dancer, an old, former artistic director of Royal Danish Ballet. It was a great experience to be able to take from such a professional person and someone that, you know, was part of a company that I really admire.
This experience is like overwhelming, like I'm enjoying every minute of it.
I love maybe not even watching the most perfect ballerina, but the ballerina, the dancers with the most heart. It has to be your life. It has to be your life.
at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion.
I didn't expect that at all. There was just so many great musicians there, like, just to back you up. It's just funny playing with people that... You're the soloist for 26 people that are better than me.
It was fun. I usually don't get to hear myself play at the big band, so it was pretty fun.
It's a great opportunity to learn about yourself as a performer and to also meet kids with your same passions. It's been one of the best things that's happened to me in my musical career so far.
Visual artists, through both the judging and mentoring process, also have a chance to meet with some of the most respected artists in their field. Their work is celebrated at an art gallery reception where awards are announced before friends and family. The finalists in all disciplines, their families, and their Spotlight Award mentors share Saturday lunch in only a few weeks before the big day. It's one more chance to celebrate what they've achieved together and get sight for the Spotlight Awards presentation at the Music Center. At their final performance, students are awarded either a $6,000 scholarship or a $3,000 scholarship.
The Spotlight Awards Program is open to high school students throughout Southern California. Everyone benefits from this experience to learn from arts professionals.
For more information and for an online application, go to musiccenter.org/education.
I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hola, ¿qué tal? Mi nombre es José Luis Sierra, y es un placer acompañar al concejal de Los Ángeles, Ed Reyes, del Distrito Uno. Bienvenido, concejal. En una edición más de El Reporte del Río Los Ángeles con Ed Reyes. En este programa hablaremos del proyecto de revitalización del río Los Ángeles con dos líderes de nuestra ciudad. Siga con nosotros y acompáñenos en El Reporte del Río. Bienvenidos al Reporte del Río con Ed Reyes. Una presentación de media hora para analizar junto con un grupo especializado que se ha dedicado a revitalizar una joya hasta ahora escondida en la rivera del río Los Ángeles. Concejal, bienvenido a este programa. Cuéntenos, ¿de qué se trata El Reporte del Río de Los Ángeles?
Pues estamos tratando de ver cómo se puede cambiar, pues, la cara de Los Ángeles, cómo se puede cambiar este elemento tan importante. Sabemos que tenemos que limpiar nuestra agua en el río. Hay muchas personas que piensan que hay un río. Tenemos que ver cómo cambiar el ambiente para poder traer más oportunidades para parques, para el desarrollo económico, y ver cómo es que seguimos el futuro sabiendo que hay mucha presión, viendo que hay contaminación del agua, contaminación del mar, y todo está conectado. Entonces, hay que averiguar qué se puede hacer para limpiar, para mejorar nuestro ambiente, y a ver cómo estimular esos cambios.
Efectivamente, hay mucha gente que piensa que el río Los Ángeles no es un río sino es un canal. Los detalles del Plan Maestro que busca transformar este río que tiene tanta historia es en una zona vibrante que contribuye a la economía y al bienestar de todos los angelinos. Así es que ahora hablemos con nuestros invitados. Ellos son Elsa López, directora de programas de educación, y Raúl Macías, director de la asociación de fútbol Anawak. Elsa, bienvenida a este programa y gracias por estar con nosotros. ¿Por qué piensas tú que este programa es importante?
Para mí, haber sido nacida en la área es muy importante para toda la comunidad, para Los Ángeles, y para todas las ciudades que están alrededor de el río.
¿Cuáles son los puntos que te parecen relevantes dentro de este estudio que se acaba de presentar?
Para mí son muy buenas ideas de cómo pueden hacer este río muy útil para toda la comunidad, para que las familias se puedan divertir en esta área y al mismo tiempo aprender a cómo proteger el río simplemente con ellos cambiando sus modos de ser, de proteger la agua, y en mismo tiempo divertirse.
Para usted, el río ya le dio una nueva faceta a toda una pasión que tiene usted con el deporte y los niños, ¿no? ¿Qué significa este proyecto para usted?
Pues significa el futuro de la comunidad en sí, de todas las comunidades que están alrededor del río. Pero más que nada significa que tenemos que educar a nuestra gente para que se involucre precisamente en la importancia que en el futuro va a tener la participación que ahora nuestra comunidad le dé al río.
Concejal, usted es a tu modo la batuta en este proyecto. Cuéntenos, ¿cómo nació el proyecto en sí? ¿Cómo fue que usted decidió involucrarse en eso?
Pues como una persona que se creyó en esa área, en Cypress Park, y mis padres, que son de México, llegaron aquí luchando para nuestra educación. Pero vi con mi hermano más mayor, íbamos a ir al parque para jugar ahí entre los juegos, pero era muy difícil porque los hombres de los pandilleros se peleaban con nosotros, nos quitaban nuestros balones, y era una lucha muy fea. Y descubrimos el río nomás de puro accidente. Llegamos aquí con las bicicletas, vimos que había agua, vimos que había árboles, que había un lugar donde era calmado, y pues pensé ya que soy concejal. Estudié en planificación y arquitectura. Vi el conexión entre el río de los jóvenes, que ya no quieren estar en ese peligro, estar en un ambiente más saludable. Y más que nada, ahora sí hay una relación con lo que es importante de la ecología. Entonces, hay ahora posibilidades de educar a la gente en cómo estamos conectados entre nuestros comportamientos, viendo cómo mantener limpio nuestras vecindades, al mismo tiempo afectando un cambio institucional y también entre la infraestructura de nuestra ciudad. Lo más importante es crear oportunidades para la gente. Más que nada, la gente es para que vive alrededor del río. La mayoría de la densidad de pobreza está en las comunidades alrededor del río. Así que aquí está una oportunidad si la gente decide participar en el proceso cívico para estimular un cambio profundo para todos.
O sea, ¿qué nos cuentas del río? ¿Cuáles son tus primeras memorias del río Los Ángeles?
Pues las primeras fueron que con mi familia íbamos y limpiábamos el río. Y era muy importante para la familia de nosotros, que era un recurso para nosotros de divertirnos en él porque no había tantos parques en ese tiempo. Y después, como crecimos, mi mamá se envolvió mucho en hacer proyectos para el ambiente, y eso a mí me llamó la atención, y regresé para atrás a Boyle Heights, que es parte del río. Y en esa área pudimos trabajar en protegerlo, y nos unimos con el concejal Reyes, que miramos que él, su visión de él era lo que toda la comunidad quería.
La protección del medio ambiente pues definitivamente es un tema central de esto, pero hay algo que usted tocó y que me gustaría reapuntar, los parques. Decía que en aquel tiempo no había muchos parques, pero me parece que en este tiempo tampoco hay muchos parques, ¿no? ¿Qué me cuentas?
Así es. Este, tenemos una falta muy grande de parques, y creemos que el río nos brinda la oportunidad para, si no complementar la falta, cuando menos encontrar un balance entre los parques recreativos y los parques pasivos. Entonces, ese es uno de los grandes proyectos que el concejal Reyes ha tratado de buscar y en el consenso con la comunidad para que las ideas diversas se mezclen para poder lograr un consenso. Y entonces, tener al menos asegurado el futuro del abastecimiento de parques. Y los parques son muy importantes, como todos sabemos, ahí precisamente están los programas preventivos para mantener a los jóvenes ocupados y las familias unidas. Entonces, es de suma importancia, y el hecho que esté incluido en el Plan Maestro, un alto porcentaje para parques, es muy importante. Y eso lo tiene que defender, y este, nuestra comunidad.
Por supuesto que son más importantes los parques que las cárceles, pero antes de continuar con El Reporte del Río y hablar con el concejal, quisiera que viéramos un poco de la historia del río de Los Ángeles, y luego volvemos con ustedes.
Quizás no se dan cuenta, pero existe un río de 52 millas que corre a través de Sur de California, 32 millas en la ciudad de Los Ángeles, y 20 millas hacia el sur. Y este río de Los Ángeles ha tomado una participación muy importante en la historia de la ciudad. El río de Los Ángeles se presenta prominentemente en la parte temprana de la historia, por el escrito de Los Ángeles de 1979. El padre Juan Crispí fue parte de la expedición por Tola española, vino a través de esta área. Esa era la fuente de vida de esta ciudad. Es lo que trajo a las personas a estar originalmente. Los pioneros originales llegaron aquí, se ubicaron en la calle Olvera y cerca de los bordes del río para poder tener agua para sus necesidades diarias. Pero mientras la ciudad se industrializó y la ciudad empezó a recibir agua de fuentes recreativas, se empezó a hacer un peligro. En 1914 hubieron inundaciones muy grandes, en 1934 y en 1938. Entonces, estas inundaciones, en 1938, mató 86 personas y causó millones de dólares en ahí. Entonces, la población para demostrar la necesidad de controlar el río junto con el deseo de reestar la economía, el Corps de la Army Federal ingenierió y los ingenieros hicieron canalizar el río. Nosotros vimos como un gran tasón, y cuando llueve, no existe ningún lugar excepto para la profundidad de este tasón, y salía lo más posible al Océano Pacífico. Entonces, realmente creíamos que salía lo más lejos posible del río de Los Ángeles y canalizarlo a este río para que lograra esto. Pusimos concreto los lados del río y en la profundidad más profunda del río. Cuando pasamos a una represión, había una necesidad de crear nuevas zonas públicas. Presidente Rossu estimuló un nuevo proyecto de ley para crear zonas federales. Y se llegó a hacer un programa de trabajo federal principalmente mientras esa cansación del río causó el control del río. La ciudad sufrió las consecuencias nocionales de esta decisión. De esta perspectiva que tenemos hasta la actualidad de la cansación del río fue una solución muy dimensional para controlarla. Inundaciones, tenemos ciertas especies de aves que en estos años vivían a lo largo del río de Los Ángeles, y ya se perdieron, cuando ellos ya no existen. Agua que fluye a través de la cuneta y las acantillas de... y entra al río, está contaminada. Las personas tiran desechos de perros, de mascotas, colillas de cigarros, y aceite y grasa, y esto lo contaminan. Pero hace dos décadas, otras actividades en la cuna empezaron a hacer movimiento por el triste estado de río de Los Ángeles en la mitad de los 80. Un petra y una luz macadamas empezó Friends of the River. Parecía una conversión muy ambiciosa, y gracias a esos esfuerzos incansables, el Río de Los Ángeles, el Río de Los Ángeles se incorporó e incluyó oportunidades a fines de los noventas para expedir un Plan Maestro para iniciar el proceso de restauración. Y luego llegó el concejal Ed Reyes, que fue electo al Consejo Comunitario de Los Ángeles en 2001. Para mí, esto realmente es un lugar donde veníamos y nos juntábamos con nuestros amigos. Como se puede ver, tiene un efecto como si estuviera enfrente de una playa cuando éramos en edad de nueve o diez años. Veníamos con nuestra bicicleta Shrin, cuatro o cinco amigos, y era muy atractivo para estar en nuestra bicicleta aquí. Brincábamos y nadábamos en el área, creando un olor. El concejal Reyes ha sido un gran campeón en esto, y este es un simple organismo, el Comité Profesional de Los Ángeles del Río. Este es otro momento muy definido para este proceso. Entonces, estos últimos dos años, la ciudad ha llevado con una serie de reuniones para escuchar comentarios de la comunidad y estudiar la renovación del río, no solamente aquí, pero renovaciones de ríos de todas las partes del mundo. Hemos organizado más de 18 reuniones, con más de 100 personas han asistido para definir lo que os quieren ver a lo largo del río. Esto es algo muy increíble que ha ocurrido en mi vida por primera vez. Las personas importan su historial y sus antecedentes culturales pueden participar en decisiones relacionadas al río. Coriazo, el río Chongchung fue pavimentado y se construyó una pista de dos pisos sobre este podemos reducir los carriles y abrir lo que se llama luz natural a su río histórico. Y con este comentario y conocimientos juntos, se han expedido el Plan Maestro de Revitalización del Río de Los Ángeles. El Plan Maestro del día de hoy define la visión, pero más importantemente empieza a crear una imagen de lo que puede ocurrir. Tenemos proyectos pendientes a la naturaleza que sí tienen fondos y quizás probablemente empezará a ser construidos en unos cuantos años. Son sitios rutas y también vías a lo largo del río. Correcto, la restauración del río empezará antes del fin de la década. Entonces, ¿qué podemos esperar después del año 2010? Miraremos al río que fue ignorado y estaba fuera de límites. Este va a ser realmente un parque, va a tener mucha más naturaleza, mucho más habitat natural, y creo que va a haber personas pescando. Mirará vecindades que van a llegar al río revitalizado, más conexiones, más puntos de acceso. Pero mientras estas mejoras están en planación a través de los años del futuro, los ciudad continuará recibiendo comentarios de la comunidad, las comunidades de las cuales ya no tienen intención de ubicar fuera de sus comunidades. Cada vecindad tendrá una oportunidad de definirse a sí mismo. Estamos creando procesos que permitirán comentarios y opiniones de la comunidad, y esta ciudad y todas las estructuras gubernamentales han hecho todo. Entonces, tú puedes esperar a que ellos no sean desubicados para encontrar este balance. La ciudad está trabajando con todos los niveles de gobierno para proveer fondos para un río revitalizado que llegará a ser multipropósito para muchos beneficios para los angelinos. Ha empezado por nuestro alcalde Antonio Villarreal, o sea, y el concejal de Reyes. La ciudad está trabajando cercanamente con los vigiladores en nivel federal, en acercamiento particularmente con la senadora congresista Roy Baller y senadora Baxter. Y bueno, estos dos actores, quizás la restauración del río era la cirugía que necesitaba la ciudad, el amanecer del evento siglo. ¿Por qué no revivir el río? ¿Por qué no hacer el elemento que le da toda esta ciudad un arreglo? La operación empieza ahora. La operación empieza ahora. Un nuevo y mejor Río de Los Ángeles está en el futuro cercano a nosotros para los Estados Gloriosos.
Resultados gloriosos los que podemos esperar de este gran proyecto y definitivamente como el Río de Los Ángeles alguna vez sirvió para fundar la ciudad de Los Ángeles esta vez la podría dar el renacimiento. ¿Dónde estamos concejal?
Pues estamos en el punto donde ya tenemos un plan. Tenemos la participación del ejército de Estados Unidos, los ingenieros que nos están dando un análisis de cómo se puede cambiar el canal, dónde se puede quebrar el cemento, dónde se puede estimular un escenario donde podemos traer a cabo los parques a ver cómo estimular el desarrollo económico. Pero más significante estamos viendo cómo cambiar la zona, cómo cambiar uso de terreno. Ahí está la lucha más grande. A ver cómo podemos traer a cabo juntas donde la gente verdaderamente que vive en esas áreas van a participar en el proceso cívico. Porque cambiando las zonas va a haber muchos, muchas, ¿cómo puedo decir? Nos va a afectar manera donde va a determinar dónde la gente puede vivir, dónde la gente puede estacionarse con los carros, dónde va a haber lugares para empleo, dónde van a situar los parques. Entonces el miedo más profundo para mí es la gente que vive ahí, que son trabajadores, que son de pocos recursos, ¿dónde van a vivir si esta estimulación económica va a traer a cabo un valor más alta? Entonces la gente tiene que participar para ver cómo podemos obligar que el gobierno y los inversionistas trabajan con la comunidad que vive ahí ahora.
La gente que vive a los lados de la Ribera tiene definitivamente un interés directo sobre el proyecto, pero el proyecto tiene una implicación mucho más amplia para todos los demás. ¿De qué manera están trabajando las comunidades? ¿Ustedes de qué manera han estado buscando extender la voz?
Una de las cosas es la gente tiene que saber que ellos tienen el poder y teniendo el poder es el único modo que esto se va a realizar. Una de las cosas que se han hecho, se han hecho juntas, se han invitado al público y como dijo el concejal, son familias que trabajan y tal vez no han tenido la oportunidad de participar y votar sus opiniones y dar ese respaldo al proyecto. Pero para mí yo pienso que informándoles, diciéndoles que ellos son los que tienen el poder y que ellos siempre van a tener ese poder, de poder tener este proyecto en progreso es un beneficio para las comunidades alrededor económicamente y también para que ellos puedan divertirse y aprovechar de lo que este proyecto puede venir para las comunidades.
Ahora, mucha gente que vive en los alrededores del río tiene el miedo de que cuando venga el cambio de zona y se presenten proyectos masivos que podrían ser hoteles, podrían ser centros comerciales, esta gente pueda perder sus terrenos, sus viviendas, sus propiedades. ¿Hay algo al respecto concejal? ¿Es cierto? ¿Es real ese miedo?
Ese miedo es real, el miedo es real.
La posibilidad.
La posibilidad también existe. La solución es el nivel de participación y la presión que uno puede poner a los políticos, las personas que van a construir, las palabras que va a realizar la ley, que va a determinar cómo se pueden manejar estas áreas. Hay zonas inclusivos donde podemos determinar porque está elevando el valor, porque es un porcentaje de esos viviendas deben que ser para personas de trabajo, trabajadores. Y ahí es la lucha, ahí está la presencia del voz al final. ¿Cuándo van a poder llegar a las juntas? ¿Cuándo podemos grabar la comedia y llegar a las juntas? Y hay procesos muy básicos que hasta ahora trabajando con los vigileros que vemos aquí, con el señor Macías, nos estamos luchando para el parque. Era muy difícil, fue los padres, las personas que tienen yo creo el deber de pelear por sus derechos y no llegan. Y ahí está la razón para esta plática, para ver cómo podemos traer energía y eliminar la apatía para traer a cabo un voz más fuerte en este proceso.
Señor Macías, usted que ya está de hecho trabajando con un proyecto en sí como es este de los campos de fútbol y todo, ¿cuáles han sido los, las barreras que usted ha visto entre la gente, los hispanos para no participar? ¿Qué excusa le ponen la telenovela?
No, mire, como todos sabemos los miedos nacen de la ignorancia. Y promoviendo a través del deporte de una manera constante la información que el distrito nos da como el concejal Reyes al día de lo que está sucediendo, de lo que vamos a hacer, de lo que vamos a discutir. Nada se va a hacer si nuestra gente participa, si nuestra gente está bien enterada y que es el trabajo básicamente que estamos haciendo nosotros, dando la información, enterándole a la gente de lo que va a suceder, de lo que le puede afectar. Eso está ayudando a que en las juntas, en los meetings cada vez haya más gente interesada, gente latina, gente hispana, que como usted dijo nuestra gente tiene por tradición una indolencia a no entrometerse en cosas que suelen la política o situaciones donde hay juntas y van a estar sentados oyendo y sienten ellos que no tienen derechos o que ellos no pueden decir, pues a mí no me gusta eso. Sienten ellos eso, pero eso está cambiando ahora. Lo vimos en Teilo Ya, fue una lucha de cinco años o más donde la comunidad dijo que es lo que quería. Ese es un punto muy importante porque en Teilo Ya a través de las juntas que se hicieron se logró, se logró por primera vez, yo digo y siempre lo diré, en la historia conjugar los pensamientos de la gente ambientalista con la gente recreativa y se logró tener un parque hermoso, balanceado donde se puede observar la flora y se puede ver los niños jugando toda clase de deportes. Eso tenemos que lograr en el río, tenemos que lograr que haya de todo para todos, pero a través de los diálogos y las juntas y la participación de la gente. Que yo estoy seguro que si seguimos con los esfuerzos que se están haciendo se va a lograr. Vamos a tardar, pero se va a lograr.
¿Cómo funcionan las juntas? ¿Cómo la gente se puede enterar de qué va a haber juntas sobre este proyecto? ¿De qué manera hay esa información?
Pues hemos formalizado un equipo de planeadores. Los planeadores van a estar dirigiendo información y traer a cabo juntas comunitarios. Se llaman los community plans. Y esos planes son desarrollados con el participar de la gente y hablando a nuestra oficina ahí en el concilio, podemos distribuir esta información, pero vamos a estar trabajando con los vigileros, con las escuelas y vamos a estar informando a la gente cuándo se van a estar estas juntas para asegurar que hay ese nivel de participación y intercambio entre todas las personas que quieren ver estos cambios positivos.
Ustedes ya han participado obviamente en esas juntas, ¿no? Y hay una percepción muy común entre la gente cuando dice, a esas juntas nada más es mucho habla y se habla demasiado y se logra poco. ¿Qué es lo que nos pueden decir al respecto?
Por una, sí, sí es cierto, la gente sí dice eso. Porque por muchos años cuando pusieron los freeways y pusieron otras cosas comenzaron a perder ese trust del gobierno.
Confianza.
La confianza. Entonces ahora todos el proyecto tienen que ganar la confianza de la comunidad y unidos pueden tener el poder, pero primero tienen que asegurarse de esa confianza de la comunidad para que puedan participar y el mejor modo es decirle la verdad desde el principio como el concejal se los ha dicho, pero unidos sí pueden evitar los problemas que están mirando que puedan llegar a sus comunidades.
¿Hay algún requisito para participar en estas reuniones?
Pues tener las ganas, tener el sentido de poder y tener ese sentido de respeto que uno su voz sí vale en el proceso de sus decisiones.
¿Aunque no esté legalmente en el país?
Pues en esta ciudad somos ciudadanos de la comunidad y eso es lo más importante.
Y es definitivamente algo de lo más importante. Y esto ha sido todo por hoy para esta edición del reporte del río con Ed Reyes. Queremos agradecer a nuestros invitados. Si usted quiere saber más sobre la revitalización del Río de Los Ángeles visite nuestra página de internet en www.leriver.org. También no olvide el número telefónico de No Emergencia, que es informativo más que nada, donde puede llamar para obtener información sobre cualquier servicio que necesite, que es el 311. En nombre del concejal Ed Reyes y todo el equipo técnico de LA City View Channel 35 se despide de ustedes José Luis Sierra.
I'm LA Mayor Antonio Villarreal. Crime affects Angelinos in every community, but thanks to the brave men and women of the LAPD, LA is turning the corner. The city's safer than it's been in decades, but there's more work to be done. The city of Los Angeles is hiring a thousand new police officers to fight crime and keep our streets safe. We offer competitive salaries, flexible schedules, and constant opportunities for promotion. Join me in the battle to keep our community safe.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Hello and welcome to our latest edition of Straight from the Tap. We're your hosts Roy Wolf.
And Marion McKenzie-Pyle. We're glad you could join us. Fall and winter are the perfect time to plant a California-friendly garden that's water-efficient and beautifully suited to our climate and weather. But have you ever wondered what goes into planting a garden? Such as where do you begin? How do you come up with a design? How do you know what plants to pick? Where to get them and how to take care of them?
Our program today will answer those questions by first taking you through a dramatic landscape makeover that turns an ordinary garden space into a California-friendly oasis. Then learn how to do your own garden makeover by watching our easy step-by-step demonstration that will teach how you too can have a California-friendly landscape in your very own outdoor space. It's all coming right up when Straight from the Tap returns in just a moment.
You won't want to miss it, so stay with us.
Kevin and Julie live in Long Beach, California with their three children. Ten-year-old Jamison, seven-year-old Brennan, and Miranda who just turned five. For the past three months, they've been busy doing a home remodel. Now the time has come to tackle the front and backyard and Kevin and Julie agree that only a complete makeover will do.
Well, we want something that's nice and clean and neat and easy to maintain and a little place for the kids to play. But we also want to demonstrate to the community a better way to do it with water-wise plants and more environmentally friendly kind of garden.
We want an inviting space with some colors, but you know, nothing too fluffy and with very California-friendly plants.
I like the barbecue a lot, so we'll have a lot of barbecues and guests over, family and friends.
Kevin and Julie also want the front of the house to be more inviting. That includes expanding the porch area and landscaping the two patches of garden on either side of the walkway.
We're having a bench built for this area so that we can use this front porch as a sitting area because the children do use the sidewalk to ride their bikes and skateboards and whatnot. So we do, we do spend quite a bit of time out here in the front yard.
Kevin and Julie have chosen native and California-friendly plants as the theme that will unite their front and back landscapes together. These plants use up to 50% less water and once established require less attention than more conventional gardens.
So we're looking for something at a modest cost, but that's still very attractive. And that's a good example for neighborhood.
We knew just the right person for Kevin and Julie's garden makeover. Landscape expert Tom Larson. For the past 30 years, Tom has specialized in water-conserving, California-friendly landscapes. Tom visited Kevin and Julie and wasted no time evaluating the layout and characteristics of both their front and backyard.
Well, this is the place, this is where we're gonna landscape. Well, you've been through a big remodeling project here and are you ready now to get involved in the back and front yard?
Yep, we're ready and to go.
Tom immediately asked about the sun and shade areas to determine what kinds of plants would do best in their garden.
Well, let's see, north's about this way, Tom. So you know, this is really hot sun over here and this is mostly in the shade except early in the morning.
Okay, so that wall then would be kind of south exposure, getting a lot of sun.
Really hot, yeah.
This would of course be the east exposure on this side. It's gonna get morning sun a little bit and this over here on this side is gonna get the western sun, which is very warm.
Really hot in the late afternoon.
You know, usually plants in the sun are irrigated a little bit differently than plants that are in the shade. We'll take all that into consideration. That's what is about a good, smart California landscape.
Tom pointed out that the Plumeria, a fragrant but thirsty tropical plant that Julie loves, is poorly situated because it prefers a little more shade.
Look what's taking place on these leaves as a result of too much sunlight. I'm gonna suggest that we remove this plant, either put it in a pot on the patio or in a container. Is that something you can live with?
Yes, that'd be fine with us.
Tom then turned his attention to the podocarpus at the far end of the garden.
I'd like to suggest we remove this tree. It looks like it's outlived its usefulness, it hasn't been really taken care of very well in this location.
Sure, that's fine.
And so we'll get something in here that was more appropriate and will thrive in a much healthier way.
Great idea.
Okay, good, I'm glad to have you with that.
Kevin told Tom he wanted a better location for the barbecue, but wasn't sure where that should be.
I think it needs to be closer to your kitchen door, your back door, where it's easy to move your food in and out of, so we can get that relocated. And again, put something here that'll be fun to look at, maybe a small little water-wise fountain, maybe with a chair or something that will really make it nice to come back and kind of relax, read a book or something.
Super.
Sounds good.
Okay.
While Julie went to pick up her children from school, Tom suggested putting up lattice work to camouflage the large air conditioner and planting flowering vines to soften the perspective along the wooden fence. Julie doesn't know it yet, but Tom also suggested removing her favorite lemon tree. You'll hear more about that later. Based on the input from Kevin and Julie, Tom went to work designing a makeover for the couple's front and backyard. Within less than one week, four stunning concepts were ready for them to look over.
Kevin and Julie, based on our earlier discussions about how you'd like to use your backyard, I brought in a couple of concepts for us to think about. This is basically concept one. We moved the barbecue from the far corner over by the deck next to the back door, which makes it easier. Added a fountain in the middle with a percolon in the back with a deck and a chair so that you can sit in the back, enjoy the fountain and also see the garden and its full array of color and beauty. And we used a lot of drought-tolerant, California-friendly plants around here that reaches your goals. Kevin, you want something that's very water-wise, but generally, what do you think of this concept?
Well, it looks nice, but I'm thinking maybe that there are too many plants. It's a little too busy for me, for our small yard.
Yeah, I like it, Tom. It looks really great. I think though if we had just a little play area for the kids so they could kick a soccer ball around in the back.
so they could kick a soccer ball around in the back, that kind of stuff.
Well, we'll take it to the next step here and see if this gets closer to what you're thinking about. I've simplified this. Basically the barbecue, same location. I moved the fountain from the middle to the back by the seating bench and the trellis, using the same plant material around the landscape, screening the air conditioning unit. Generally, we have a very good drought-tolerant grass that's been specified here called buffalo grass. And it should be a very drought-tolerant, but yet active area for your children as well as your guests. So what are your thoughts on this design?
I think that looks great. What do you think?
No, I think that would meet all of our family's needs.
That is something that kind of you agreed with in the backyard. We'll move in that direction. Let's go to the front yard and the concept that we started with the front yard.
Although beautiful, Kevin and Julie also found Tom's first design for the front yard a little too busy. They preferred more open space for the children to play.
Let me show you that plant real quick maybe so we can get some of your ideas. Again, simpler plan. I'm using drought-tolerant buffalo grass here. The trees removed out on the parkway. The trees are compatible to the city's tree list, so these are cassia trees. Same plant materials that were arranged more formally the way that I think that you expressed, Julie. And so everything else is pretty much the same as far as the design. The bricks, the walkway goes all the way out to the curb, which gives the perception that your yard is much larger. Any comments on this design?
Well, I think this one's great. I really like the way you've laid this out.
Yes, I agree. This is, this is quite lovely. I like all the colors and the clean look of it. It's lovely.
Of course, being a California-friendly landscape, it's gonna be a landscape that hits all your goals. Water-wise, it's gonna value your property, and it's gonna be efficient in respect to maintenance.
I think this is exactly what we're looking for, Tom.
That's really good to hear.
Good job.
Now that Kevin and Julie have agreed on a landscape design, it was time to go shopping for plants. Thanks to increasing demand, California-native and water-wise plants have become easier to find. And even the big retail nurseries now carry many attractive varieties.
All of these plants are California natives and they've got a nice display here so that you get a chance to see the different sizes, colors. If you look here, here's a nice little display of the different colors and flowers and foliage and sizes and so forth. So this will really give you a good idea of what a California native garden can look like. Here is a salvia. It's a beautiful little fast-growing plant that has wonderful flowers either in red or white. If you like hummingbirds, you like butterflies, they'll dance in your garden with this plant. Another nice plant for the border, doesn't get very tall, is this Berkeley sedge. Very drought-tolerant, but look at the colors. And just you got the blue greens and the yellow greens. And so this works well around the border of an area. It stays very small. Here's some examples. We're into some California natives as well as some water-wise plants, not all from California. Here's a wonderful native, this Tacoma from this yellow flower. Take a look at this. Boy, does that, does that fire up, huh? That's a beautiful flower. You'll get hummingbirds and butterflies with that plant.
Is it like a tree?
No, it's actually it's a fast-growing shrub. It's very fast, so you want to put it in an area where you have a lot of room. I would say it's gonna get up to seven, eight feet and you can manage to that level and probably four to five feet wide, so it's quite fast. Now, this is a strawberry tree. It's a drought-tolerant tree, not a native of California, but it's a California-friendly plant. It has beautiful little small white flowers that come on in early spring and then by late summer you start developing these, the fruit, which actually will turn bright red. You know, it's really fashionable nowadays. It's using succulents intermixed in your garden. The eclectic garden is very popular with landscape architects, new developers. Here's some, just some examples of some succulents that you can find in nurseries.
Now that the design and the plants were selected, the time had come to begin the makeover. Work began early in the morning and by noon the place was beyond recognition. There was no turning back now. The first thing to go was the cool-seasoned grass. At Tom's request, it had been sprayed and killed to make pulling it up easier. The soil got cleansed of roots and then enriched with organic materials and fertilizers. The potocarpus was shown the back door. And although Julie doesn't know it yet, her favorite lemon tree was also dug up and shipped out.
The lemon tree was a little bit of a diplomatic move on my part. Julie didn't really know she was gonna lose that lemon tree. It was something that she enjoyed. We couldn't save it, but we're gonna replace it with something even better, a nicer and higher-quality lemon tree. So she's gonna be real satisfied with that.
Over in the front yard, the mason and his team were busy laying a basket weave pattern of gray and brown bricks for the new porch, walkway, and four planter shelves.
It's a little pot shelf or whatever. It's just gonna be the same height as the porch and it's just gonna come out about 32 inches square and it's gonna be just a pot on either side. And they're, they're repeating on the bottom of the walk too where the pots down there.
Another big project was removing this old stump. Just a few days ago, this had been a 12-foot tree, but Tom ordered it cut down because of disease. Suddenly, the unexpected happened. The saw severed a main water pipe that left Julie's house without supplies.
I've hit the water line. It's right here.
Where is it? I can't.
Right here.
Oh, there it is. Is it copper?
Yes.
Is that my new one?
It must be because this line here that was marked in blue, blue standing for water, is incorrect.
Are you gonna be able to finish or not?
Yes.
Oh. Great. Thank you.
Kevin returned home to survey the damage and took things in his stride.
There's no way they could cut that tree stump out and not break the water line as close as it was. They had to break it. I figured, well, I figured they'd break it.
Developments in the backyard, however, got some different reactions.
Wow, Tom, what have you guys been doing?
Looks like they've been digging everything. And where's my lemon tree?
Where's your lemon tree?
What happened to the lemon tree?
I thought we were.
No, we were saving it.
I thought we were gonna save the lemon tree.
Yeah.
Did they haul it away?
Yes.
Oh.
The lemon tree was not the only thing that was about to disappear. There in the back sat Kevin's old barbecue.
This one's about 10 years old and it's just falling apart inside. Look at that. It looks terrible. Sometimes I wonder if I should even eat off of it, but I figure it's hot enough to kill any germs in there. Nothing could live in there.
The remainder of the week was one dedicated to completing the site preparation. The land was leveled and trenches were dug to accommodate the irrigation lines.
We're using a low-volume irrigation system for the shrub areas and a sprinkler system for the turf areas. The sprinkler system, however, has got one of the new technologies that will conserve water as a result of applying water as an overhead spray. One of the things that we're doing with the turf areas is we're trying to utilize the newest technology, which is a multi-stream rotating nozzle that replaces the typical fan spray nozzle that we see. The advantages with that is that it has a much lower precipitation rate and a much higher level of uniformity, which equate to water savings.
The team then laid redwood header boards to create distinct areas for grass and shrubs. A special corner was planned that would feature a pergola for shade, a charming wooden bench, and a small water fountain. Finally, the masonry work was completed on the front porch, the walkway, and the backyard. In five days, Kevin and Julie's front and backyard went from looking like this to this. It's week two of Kevin and Julie's makeover. The site is now ready for the new plants and everyone's excited to get started. What no one expected though was what suddenly arrived at Julie's house in a box.
Here's my lawn in a box. Our grass that's going to be planted on the lawn. It's, it came in boxes and it is going to be planted in little rows. I think they're gonna be a few inches apart and it's amazing. And this is gonna cover all this and the two patches in the front. So it'll be interesting to see how they space out.
Out in the front, as the other plants started to arrive, the beauty, colors, and textures of an authentic California-friendly landscape began coming to life.
Kevin and Julie and the kids' plants have finally arrived. And if you can look and see what's around me, you'll notice the California natives and the California-friendly plants, all water-wise plants are full of color and texture and great beauty. One of my favorites, of course, is the seaanothus or the mountain lilac, beginning to start to flower, that beautiful lavender flower. Great glossy green leaves. The coral bells, the hookah, will show a wonderful display of beautiful pink flowers this spring. Take a look at this beautiful salvia and that salmon-colored flower. A plant that's gonna bring a lot of hummingbirds and butterflies. Behind me is a dwarf fountain grass. It's a dwarf, grows about three feet high. But you look at the seed and the color of this beautiful plant, we have some lavender, some dwarf lavender that'll fit and be very confined to the nice local spaces that they have available. And then some rosemary. This is not a native, but it's a great plant. If you like some food in your garden, because you can certainly use that for seasoning, but that's gonna be a low-growing rosemary. So all these plants that you see around me are gonna be going in the garden the next day or two, all selected by Kevin and Julie.
Suddenly, this enormous rig rounded the bend and stopped in front of the house. Whatever it was carrying looked as big as a dinosaur. Its cargo turned out to be two beautiful young trees. When mature, this kind will blossom with bright yellow flowers.
I love the trees. The trees are really nice. What kind are they?
A golden medallion tree. That's on the city tree list. And as you notice, there's no power lines to interfere with. It's always important when you plant a tree to be looking up ahead and above and be sure there's no power or high-power lines that it's gonna interfere with. Very important.
Mm-hmm. And they're water-efficient too?
Extremely. And the whole, the whole garden is water-efficient.
Great.
Very low green waste production, meaning there's not a lot of green waste you're gonna have to put in the landfill or into the trash cans every week.
Great. All right. It's looking great, Tom. Really great.
Good. I'm glad you're happy.
Thanks.
Planting continued in and around the trees and shrubs. The planters were filled with graceful aloe plants to soften the geometric design of the front entrance. This graceful acacia tree also was located along the backyard fence to bring softness and beauty to the rectangular landscape. Tom showed Kevin what was sure to become his favorite place in the backyard.
They painted the pergola today.
Yeah, you know, Julie selected the color. It's a solid stain. And the painters painted today, got it up, but notice the shade here at this time of day. So when you come home from working, come out, of course, the fountain will be right at your feet.
Right.
And you'll have the shade again in the California native plants and the grasses behind here. You know, the salvia close by, probably end up with a climbing shrub of some type that will come over and hang, which will offer even more shade, more beauty in years to come. So I think it came out very, very nice.
This looks really good. I can't wait to get my paper on Sunday morning when the kids are still sleeping. Sit right here with the fountain on and read with my cup of coffee for a half hour.
There you go.
This'll be my reading spot.
That'll be perfect.
Yeah.
Kevin also had something special to show Tom.
Here's the new barbecue, Tom. Isn't that great? I already tried it out.
Oh, you have?
I like it. It's right next to the kitchen, so it's good that you moved it over here. It's a lot more.
Accessible.
Accessible here as a component. It was way back in the corner before.
You don't have to wait so long to eat.
As the planting and mulching continued, the garden colors and textures really started coming to life. Joe made soca rings to go around all the plants. These eventually will be buried out of sight.
In drip irrigation, you want to have a minimum of two emitters per plant so that if one clogs up, you still have water that's getting to the plant material.
Tom took these pink and orange golden flame vines and carefully spread them out across the back fence. The garden was now almost complete. It was time to give Julie an update.
Julie, let me show you a few things here in the garden. We're almost finished with your outdoor room. About 95, maybe 97 and a half percent complete. A few things that I'd like to show you that we've accomplished here in the last day or so. We have the irrigation system in. All the irrigation is complete. And what's really unique about this irrigation system, it's a smart irrigation system, meaning it's gonna save a tremendous amount of water. Let me show you.
Right.
Under and around these plants is a drip hose. That hose actually emits water to the appropriate level for each of these plants. That's extremely efficient. No water waste. The water gets right into the ground where it's needed, no runoff. So it's really a superb system. So all of these plants that you see in your outdoor garden, the California-friendly garden, is all very water-efficient. You also notice that we have a layer of mulch that we put on top of the soil. That mulch has multiple benefits. It actually insulates the soil, so it keeps the water in the soil. It also reduces weeds and of course it makes a very beautiful and aesthetic appearance, that nice bark brown color against the green foliage of the plant material. In about two hours, we'll have it all finished. The grass will be in and then you'll be able to come out here and enjoy yourself and really have a lot of fun in your garden.
It looks beautiful.
Good. Julie, I think you did a great job of selecting this fountain, you and Kevin. And the nice thing about it is it really fits well to the scale of the garden, but also it's a very low-water-using fountain, very efficient as well. Also in the back, you've noticed that we planted some coral bells to kind of fill in some of the large areas. And these are a very beautiful plant, again with the seaanothus, all California natives. That really add a tremendous amount of color. It's gonna make this outdoor living space very spectacular. As these plants develop their flowers in the spring and with the contrast with the seaanothus and the vines that we have espalierated are spread out over this cedar fence, all this contrast is really gonna make this backyard pop. It's gonna be really exciting to come back out here and entertain and just have a wonderful time enjoying this beautiful outdoor room, which is a California-friendly landscape. This is our final phase and about two hours from now, you'll see all of this grass, this warm-seasoned grass, which we recommend in the California-friendly landscape, installed under my feet.
It's now been two weeks since Kevin and Julie began their garden makeover. The couple wanted their outdoor space to become a water-wise garden that was neat and easy to maintain, provided more room for the children to play, and gave them more room for entertaining. Did they get what they wanted? Let's have a look. Two weeks ago, the front of Kevin and Julie's house used to look like this. Today, the front yard is a peaceful, luscious showcase of California's most water-efficient plants, from drought-resistant grass to pendulous trees to flowering shrubs. The walkway has been extended out to the curb, opening up the look and feel of the front of the house. And Julie has a more inviting porch from where she can watch her children while visiting with her friends. The backyard began looking like this. Now it's a garden oasis displaying plants of many colors and textures, a graceful tree and a central grassy area where the children can play. Towards the back, an inviting corner awaits where the family can sit and relax under the shade of a pergola and enjoy the soothing sounds of water. Flowering vines and whimsical figurines accent the cedar fence. And the air conditioner that once dominated this corner has been hidden behind a stained wooden lattice work accented with small hanging pots and other artistic touches. Finally, Kevin's barbecue now conveniently sits outside the kitchen and next to the new deck, creating a perfect space for cooking and entertaining.
Oh, it's exactly what we wanted. It's turned our whole backyard into a real new part of our home. It's really converted it into, almost like an addition to our house. It's great. It's really wonderful.
My favorite part is the bench area back there. I look forward to spending afternoons back there and admiring the garden and seeing how it grows.
And I love the new barbecue. The location here is just perfect. The whole front yard just looks beautiful. I like the combination of the landscaping and the brick and the new front porch. And it just, it just looks great, the way everything's laid out together. It really looks beautiful.
Kevin, Julie, and the children are finally ready to show off their new California-friendly garden. They've planned a small afternoon party for friends and neighbors and everyone's excited to come over and check out the new remodeled landscape.
Well, it looks great. Julie won't have to mow it now.
Beautiful. Wow. I really like the different colors and it looks like it's really low maintenance too. Gorgeous.
It looks wonderful. It's not even related to what it used to look like.
I love, I love the tree there.
Aren't lamps are beautiful. You think they're beautiful? It's gonna be fun to see them grow and learn more about them.
It's an outdoor living space. It's a room.
They really did it in one week?
Did they do it in one week?
Nine days.
Nine days.
Nine days. That's amazing.
I already saw a butterfly today.
Did you?
Yeah, when I came over from work there.
You'll see a lot more butterflies and the hummingbirds will come and visit.
This is a good vantage point to watch the grass grow and spread. Spread a little.
So in two or three months, right?
It'll be all filled in, be a nice carpet of green grass. It'll be all filled in, be a nice carpet of green grass. Originally, we're gonna put a tree here, a tree on the other side.
Oh, I like it. I like it.
Welcome back. If you'd like to learn how to create a California-friendly garden in your outdoor space, stay with us. Coming right up, we'll teach you how to design, plant, and care for a water-wise landscape, step by step. It's fun, it's easy, and the results are spectacular. Stay with us.
If you're like me, you want your outdoor landscape to have multiple benefits. And the beauty about the California-friendly landscape, using native plants, good irrigation, and good care provides a multitude of benefits. First of all, native plants and those water-wise plants like our weather. They like our climate. They like that nice, cool winter, and they like that hot, dry summer. And the most beneficial part of native plants is they take very little water, but they're beautiful. They come with great color, great fragrance, great dimension, and just beautiful shapes and sizes. Using the California-friendly landscape is gonna make your outdoor space something you're gonna be proud of. It's gonna be efficient, it's gonna increase the value of your property, and it's gonna be beautiful and practical for your family and friends. If you want to have a successful landscape, there's a few things that you wanna consider. Number one, you wanna, really wanna know what kind of climate zone you live in. And really what we're asking here is how cold it gets in the wintertime. Do you get a lot of frost? And in the summertime, how hot does it get? Frequently, when you go to a landscape professional and wanna select a plant, you wanna be able to let them know what kind of climate you live in. You certainly don't wanna take a cool-season plant or a plant that doesn't like frost and put it in a frosty location. So understand exactly kind of the climate zone that you're in. That's gonna be very helpful. Also, what you wanna do is to determine around your house, what direction is north? So when you walk out your front door, are you facing north, south, east, or west? That also helps one understand where to plant plants, because that gives you an idea of where the shade and where the sun patterns are throughout your landscape area. That's important. Part of the planting process of your landscape is to really identify what kind of theme that you would like for your outdoor living space, that outdoor room. There are several different types of themes that people are attracted to. It may be a Spanish-type of landscape, Mediterranean-type. It could be a very natural-type-of-looking landscape, a butterfly garden, a hummingbird garden, many different types of themes. And then, once that theme is established, of course, you wanna find the right plants that work within your landscape. And a very important part is to define plants or select a plant that's gonna work within that given space. If you have a two-by-two-foot-square shrub area, you don't wanna plant a plant that grows to ten or fifteen feet wide that's gonna outgrow that space where you're gonna have to prune it severely. You wanna find a plant that works within that space. And the California-friendly or the California-native plants are the plants that you'll wanna select for your landscape. And there's several different varieties, several different textures, several different colors and fragrances that can really make your garden pop and really become alive and beautiful, a lot of fragrance. Understanding your soil texture is pretty important in the garden, because the soil is really what brings life to the plant. It provides water, nutrients, stability, and it really allows the plants to grow well. And a healthy soil means you'll have healthy plants. So one of the first things you wanna do is just take a little physical examination of your soil. Texture is really the size of the mineral parts of your soil. A sandy soil have very large mineral components. A clay soil, very microscopic. If I was comparing one to the other, a sandy particle would be like the size of a beach ball, and a clay particle would be like the size of a pencil point on a piece of paper. So by just grabbing a piece of soil and looking at it, you can tell if you have a heavy soil, clay soil, because when you squeeze it, it'll stay together. And if you try to move it with your fingers, it'll form a ribbon. Well, this soil is more of a loam soil, kind of in-between, it falls apart, a very healthy soil. If you have a heavy clay soil, you're in a new development, you're likely gonna need to amend it to help the soil and to help the plants grow healthy. And the way to do that is just take a sample down to your nursery, your certified nursery professional at your retail nursery center, hand them some soil or put it in a little baggie and say, "What kind of soil do I have?" And they'll be able to describe the kind of soil you have and perhaps the kind of amendments that you're gonna need to improve the quality of your soil and improve the value and the beauty of your plants. To understand your soil can have a real profound effect on your garden and how well your plants do. And one of the important things about soil is how fast the water will percolate through the soil. Heavy clay soils, the water moves through that soil very slowly. Sandy soils, it moves through very rapidly. So a simple percolate test in your garden will give you an indication of how well your soil drains. So I'm gonna show you how to do that right now. So first, we're gonna dig a hole about eight to ten inches deep. The soil has been hydrated, otherwise it's wet, and that's the appropriate time to fill the hole with water. So I'm gonna take a hose, and I'm gonna fill it with water. Fill it all the way to the top. After the hole is filled with water, what we wanna do is try to measure how fast that water will recede on a per-hour basis. And what I like to use is either a tape measure or a ruler. And what we'll do is extend the tape so it reaches to the bottom of the hole. We can see that this, depth of this water is nine inches. And really what we want to try to accomplish here is to determine how fast that water is going to recede or move into the soil. Now, if you have a clay soil, a heavy soil, it's gonna move rather slowly. But if it's a sandy soil, that water would percolate right down pretty rapidly. Ideally, what we'd like to see is to have water move through the soil at one inch or greater per hour. Two hours ago, for this simple percolation test, we put nine inches of water into this hole. And presently, after two hours, we're down to three inches, meaning in two hours, the water percolated into the ground six inches, which means that's excellent drainage. Now, for new developments, frequently you'll find soils that are very heavy, highly compacted. If you dig a hole, as if you can dig a hole, because it's very difficult, you'll fill up the hole, come back the next day, and the water may not have receded more than an inch. That tells you that your soil doesn't drain very well. In that case, you wanna go to the nursery, take some soil with you in a baggie, and ask the nursery person what you can put into the soil to help your drainage. A fun step in the landscape process is actually planting the plant. And one of the things that you wanna do first before you dig your hole is to find out the depth of that root ball. And that simply can be done by just measuring the depth of the root ball. So if you look inside the container, and I can see this root ball is down about four or five inches from the top of the container. So this root ball depth is seven inches. I wanna dig this hole so it's seven inches. So I want the hole large enough and have the sides of the hole soft enough so it makes a very pleasant environment for this new plant. Simply, after the hole is dug, you wanna take the plant out of the container carefully so that you don't disturb the root ball. Simply straddle the bottom of the plant with your hand and then pull the container off of the plant and then set the plant in the hole at the right depth so the top of the root ball is even with the existing grade. And then position the plant so it becomes attractive from the point that you'll be viewing it. At this point, we're ready to backfill the plant with the soil that we have here next to the hole. Once you have the tree in its final home and you backfill the soil around the root ball, I always like to put a watering basin around the plant to ensure that water will focus and move right down into that root ball. So the process is just a matter of piling up some dirt, forming a dish around the base of the plant. After you have that berm in place, then it's time to irrigate it. And the beauty about native plants and California-friendly plants, you don't have to do this very often. A good drink of water at planting time will allow this plant to get off to a good start and become well-established soon in the landscape. So to get the plant off to a good start, you wanna dig a right hole. You wanna place the plant at the right depth and also at the right angle. Backfill it properly, build a nice berm, water it. And that way, you're gonna get it off to a good start with your new plants. If you're looking to plant grass in your California-friendly landscape, there are two classes of grasses that we use in Southern California. There's the cool-season grasses, which we call the fescue grasses, very commonly found now throughout Southern California. You buy them in sod or seed. And then there's the warm-season grasses. The warm-season grasses are what you see on athletic fields. And they're used there because they're more durable, they have a lot of strength, and they can take a lot of abuse. We recommend that if you're going to grass your house or put lawn in your house, you think about using the warm-season grasses. In fact, I'm kneeling on a warm-season grass now called St. Augustine. It's a very durable, very tough grass that makes a beautiful landscape part of your house. But more importantly, it's a grass that doesn't take a lot of care and takes very, very little water. In fact, warm-season grasses take about half the amount of water as cool-season grasses. So if you're thinking about grass, think about warm-season grasses, save a lot of water, and have a beautiful lawn. The California-friendly landscape uses smart irrigation technology. And that's irrigation sprinkler systems that put on water very evenly, efficiently, and they can save us forty percent of our water. That's good for our water supply, it's good for our budgets, and it's also good for our plants. There is a difference. Presently today, you see irrigation heads in the lawn that are four-inch pop-ups that put on water in a fan-spray fashion. And let me demonstrate that for you. This is a fan-spray, very commonly seen today in most of our landscapes. There's a lot of drift and a lot are wasted in this type of an application, and it doesn't put on the water very uniformly. And it puts it on at such a volume sometimes that the soil can't absorb it. And when that happens, then the water, it can't be absorbed, runs off down into our gutter, and it's an extreme amount of water waste. The California-friendly landscape uses a smarter technology, which is a stream rotor, and it applies water like the rain does. It's a stream rotor that gently applies water to the, to the grass and to the landscape. The soil absorbs it, there's virtually no runoff, the plants enjoy it, and it's a much healthier way for plants to be irrigated. And it's also fun to watch. If you notice, a stream rotor is more efficient. It, it moves through the landscape, and it applies water with great uniformity and great distribution uniformity. So if you're thinking about using irrigation technology in the California-friendly theme, go for the stream rotors. These sprinkler heads are about five dollars apiece, and you're gonna have to look for them at the Irrigation Landscape Supply houses. You won't find them at nurseries and some of the mass merchandisers yet. And if you go to bewaterwise.com, you'll find where you can purchase these heads. When you move into the shrub areas, there are four different types of irrigation devices that I'd like to show you that are low-volume, that really work with the California-friendly landscape. All of these devices, these drip emitters, drip systems, fine-spray systems, put water right where the plant needs it, right at the root ball area. One example of emitter that can be plugged into a poly pipe laid through your garden is this fine little sprinkler that puts water right around the base of the plant. Another fine-spray, low-volume device for large areas where you might have a ground cover that can be directed to any location you like, right where the root zone is, is this fine spray system. And the third emitter is called a drip emitter, and these can be plugged right into the poly pipe. And what's important with these emitters is that you wanna have one on each side of the root ball. And so they just drip water right to the root zone area. And lastly, is an emitter, that's an inline emitter that can be put around the root ball, plugged into the poly pipe. And all of this pipe can be hidden by a layer of mulch, so you'll never see it. And again, it just drips water into the area of the root zone where it's most advantageous for the plant. The California-friendly irrigation systems are low-flow. They put water right where the plant wants it. It's much better for our environment, saves a tremendous amount of water. And to get more information about this, you can go to the website, bewaterwise.com. The most efficient way to water your landscape, believe it or not, is with a hose. And that is that person who walks around the garden early in the morning, and we call them a hose dragger, and waters their garden with a hose and perhaps a nozzle. It's still the most efficient way to do that. Many of us are too busy to do that, and we have selected to use automatic controllers. Unfortunately, most of the controllers in the houses today are old-fashioned controllers, and they water automatically, rain or shine, unless the homeowner goes out and adjusts those controllers during those weather changes. That doesn't happen very often. The smart controller, which is now coming onto the market, the California-friendly controller, waters it according to the weather. I have several controllers that I wanna show you that fit into this smart or weather-tracking controller that I would suggest that you think about for your landscape. I have three controllers in front of me that I call smart controllers. These are weather-tracking controllers. These are extremely efficient, and they water according to the weather and the temperature. This particular controller has historical weather information in it, and it also has a temperature sensor that hangs to the outside of the garage or underneath the eve. That temperature sensor, along with its historical data, tells the controller how much water to apply at what times of year. These two controllers are much more sophisticated, and they are actually satellite-controlled. Every day, these controllers get a signal from the satellite telling them what the weather is like outside. These controllers then make that adjustment, and then will water your landscape according to the weather. Therefore, it takes a lot of the guesswork out. And for those people who are busy, who can't get out and change their controller every week, these controllers will do that for you. They're more expensive, they save a tremendous amount of water, and they're certainly much better for our plants as well as our environment. Once you've completed your landscape and it's all in place, and you look back and say, "Boy, this is a beautiful landscape. It reaches my goals." A question that is often asked is, "How much water is this landscape gonna require?" And by looking at your plants, they'll tell you. In fact, if you're using the California-friendly or the California-native plants, these are the water-wise plants that are really acclimated to our area. They use very little water, so the answer is pretty easy. In fact, they use two-thirds less-